Way great. All right, so I guess we can wait a few more seconds for the rest of our council to join us. All right, Councilmember Moore, City Attorney. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start up the meeting again. We are at our consent calendar, and the consent calendar comprises items five through nine inclusive. I do have an email from a member of the public who specifically asked to pull, and I just want to make sure I get this correct. Peggy Griffin asked to pull item nine in an email. I do have another item with a request for a particular action on item number eight. And so that request from the public is to actually deny the request, and so I'm gonna take that as a polling of the item as well. Let me go to council first before we go to the public, asking, does anyone want to pull any of the items five, six, or seven from consent? I see Councilmember Moore, your hand is up.
Well, okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. It was actually, I agree with pulling items eight and nine and not five, six, and seven.
Okay, let me go to the public. Members of the public, if you would like to speak to the consent calendar, items eight and nine are already polled, so five, six, or seven. I don't see any hands. We'll bring it back to council. I'd like to entertain a motion for items five through seven.
So I'll move approved consent calendar number five to seven.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Way's motion?
I second it.
All right, Councilmember Moore, seconds. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes, Kirsten.
I did want to just point out that I did include a red line amended minutes for April 6th to delete an extraneous approval action that was already noted in the consent calendar summary approval. So it was just a minor fix, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. I did submit that to the council today.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk, for noting that for the record. Items five through seven, and Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up.
I just want to comment on the meeting minutes, that I noticed that what the residents said during the open communications portion, those were all, that was all captured, but there is very little, in fact, often nothing about what the council members have said about items. So if people are looking at these minutes, unfortunately, you're probably gonna be better off if you go to the YouTube transcript, if you want to know what was said.
Okay, thank you, council. And are you referring to the immediately following item that we've placed on the agenda now after oral communications? With regard to council comments?
With regards to, yeah, the March 16th, 30th, and the April 6th minutes, when I was reviewing them, I just noticed that there was, it was very light, if not nonexistent, for what the council members had to say.
Okay, got it. All right, you know, hopefully we can take that guidance going forward. I'm not sure if March 16th, we had that item on there immediately after oral communications. That gave us the ability to explicitly speak to some of the oral communication comments as immediate follow-ups or answering questions. But so noted, thank you very much. And so I don't see any other hands up. Let's go ahead and vote on items five through seven with a roll call vote, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great, and so now we're on to consent item number eight. The subject is consideration of approval of a semi-rural designation eliminating the requirement for sidewalks on the eastern portion of Carmen Road between Scenic Boulevard and Stevens Creek Boulevard pursuant to ordinance number 1925. And so we did have a request from a member of the public via email, and the request was not to approve this. And so this has been polled. Would staff like to provide a brief introduction into this item and what the request from the applicant is? Madam City Manager, if you would please introduce whomever from staff would be able to provide that summary.
That would be our Chief Engineer Chad Mosley.
Okay, welcome back, Chad.
Thank you, councilmembers. This is for a semi-rural designation along the east side of Carmen Road, as indicated. The designation is the request to remove sidewalk on this section of roadway. If I may share my screen and pull up the exhibit from the staff report. This is Exhibit A from the staff report. The areas in light blue, this is the area where the sidewalk is being requested, the sidewalk requirement is being requested to be removed. Should be noted that all of the existing purple areas are already semi-rural designations, meaning there is no sidewalk in those areas. This section of Carmen Road is a residential area. There is not a lot of vehicular traffic, especially north of Janus Avenue, as all of these existing roads, this is a no outlet neighborhood. There's only one way in and one way out, and that's through Janus. It should also be noted that the Carmen Road Bridge, which is being considered, is located over Stevens Creek at the north end of this section of light blue. And I have a feeling that part of the reasons there are concerns and the request to deny this is because of this Carmen Road Bridge connection. That being said, the city has looked at this area. Again, vehicular traffic is minimal, it is fairly slow, and we do not believe that sidewalks are absolutely necessary in this area, which is why you see the recommendation to have this become a semi-rural location. I'm happy to answer any specific questions along those lines, but I wanted to provide some background in the situation.
All right, great, thank you. Our councilmembers, Way and Willie have their hands raised. Councilmember Way?
Yes, so can you put the map back, please? Thank you. Thanks, Chad. So the road across, the houses across from it, does it have sidewalk already?
They do not, no. This is a semi-rural area.
No, but across from it is not semi, it's not purple, though. Right across from it, blue is not purple.
I'm not 100% sure if there's any sidewalk in that area at this point in time. That area is not currently semi-rural, and so I would, if somebody were to come in and request a semi-rural designation, we would look at it at that point in time.
Okay, so my second question is, for the current semi-rural destinations, would they ever be be able to convert to not semi-rural, that would the city be able to request sidewalks? Or it's up to the residents? That's just my question. I'm not sure about the procedure. I know the procedure is to apply to be semi-rural, but what's the procedure to be applied out of it? Or does the city have any jurisdictions, that when the needs come up, we want sidewalks? It looks like the other side does have sidewalks.
It looks like a portion of this section north on the east side does have sidewalks. There are some undeveloped areas.
Right, but when they develop, they probably need sidewalks, because they're not semi-rural.
In this case, because there's already existing sidewalk, if this property were to redevelop, we would require sidewalks to be extended.
Okay, so if we designate this side to be semi-rural, then that side would not have sidewalks. That doesn't balance the rule.
This side here is where the semi-rural designation is being requested to be removed.
Got it, okay. So my other question has nothing to do with this. How do they request out of being semi-rural, or they never do it?
If the city designates a semi-rural designation, the residents could, with a two-thirds consensus, request that they be removed from a semi-rural designation. Additionally, these are typically, you know, as properties develop, the city gets property right-of-way, so that we own typically 10 feet behind the face of curb. And if we had, if we were to acquire all that right-of-way, and at some point in the future, the city decides that we need to have sidewalks, that is our land, we can go and do sidewalks. We would, of course, do outreach to the residents, we would have neighborhood meetings to talk with them about this. But ultimately, that would be the city's decision.
Okay, but if they already have landscaping, doesn't that we have to work with them to make it happen?
Correct, yeah, correct. We, you know, again, landscaping is typically located in the public right-of-way, and because that is the city's property, we have a right to do with that property as we see fit. But we would, of course, work with the residents to the maximum extent.
And by the time we, if the city does decide to do that, the city will have to pay for the sidewalk and everything, right?
That would probably be the case, yes. If we found that there was a sidewalk necessary, we would probably go in and pay for the sidewalk.
All right, thanks, Chad.
Okay, great. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, yeah, I'm a little bit confused. I think almost the exact same question as Councilman Way. If you could put the map back up, that would sure help. I mean, the picture you just showed, picture's worth a thousand words. Okay, great. That helps to understand. So on this map, the sidewalks that you were just showing us, is that the left side, those white squares, all of those are sidewalk? Or where are those sidewalks that you just showed it? Can you highlight in red, maybe? I don't know if you can enlarge that at all, but, you know, if you could put a red line.
Yeah, I apologize. My microphone is muted, and I was trying to figure out how to unmute it. I'm not quite sure how it happened. The sidewalk is currently located along these two properties here, 10171 and 10161.
Only those two?
These two, yeah. This 10145 does not actually have sidewalk at this point in time. If they were to redevelop, we would request sidewalk then.
And the other three white squares?
As we proceed up the hill here, the other three squares, one, two, and three, no sidewalk on those.
No sidewalk. So now if we go back to your other map, you're saying everything in blue is no sidewalk. Those other 1, 2, 3, 4 should also be blue, no sidewalk as of today. Now, the purple on both sides of Stevens Creek Boulevard, the purple, so I gathered that the ones on the lower portion that are purple have no sidewalks there. It sounded like that's what you were saying, that's all semi-rural, no sidewalks there.
Correct.
Now, the other side of Stevens Creek, where the Carmen Bridge would land, are those 6, 3, 5, 3 and 2 in that court, are there any sidewalks there?
I don't believe there are, and we can take a quick peek. You gotta love Google Street View.
Yeah.
As can be seen, there are no sidewalks for these.
So, yeah, so the concern that I would have, I mean, obviously, we can't quite make a decision until we're ready to vote on it. But, boy, I tell you, you know, this small agenda item is going to affect not three or four houses. You know, we have to be fair. If we were to do those blue houses, we need to do the white houses. But if we do the white houses and the blue houses, to be fair, I mean, how come you're not making them do it, is gonna be the argument. You know, you're making us put sidewalks. If I had one of those white or blue houses, you're making us put white sidewalks, but you're not making them put a sidewalk. So it's kind of like piecemeal. That doesn't make it right. I'm just indicating that, you know, in terms of trying to be equitable, if it was like everything else had sidewalks, and there was just a string of white houses didn't have sidewalks, I think we'd be able to say, well, that seems like, trying to make everything contiguous, and seems like an appropriate decision. Hey, it's time to kind of clean up that small section, but it's kind of the opposite.
Let me go on to Councilmember Moore for questions at this point. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, okay, thank you, Chad, for bringing this map up. Could you please go back to the Google Satellite View, and I imagine that we're going to go to public comment after this, and then we'll bring it back for a motion deliberations. That's my expectation, so I'll try not to get into too much commentary right now. So my concern is the ADA requirement for this area, and I noticed, if you can go to the, this, what they call the satellite view. I think it takes a minute to load. All right, and what I'm hoping is that we can essentially walk down Carmen Road to Stevens Creek Boulevard. So if we could, street view, walk down Carmen Road, again, all the way to Stevens Creek, and then get to the other side. So, okay, so here we've got sidewalk on the left, and if I'm a pedestrian on the right side, I'm gonna be walking in the street, and that power pole's in the street. Wait a minute. Okay, so, all right, so now I'm on this paved surface on the right side. So if we're talking about somebody who is in a wheelchair, they are now on this surface, and then they've got to somehow get over to this sidewalk, and we can keep moving. And then on the opposite side of the street, there's nothing for them, so they're in traffic. Okay. And we're still heading north. Okay, so on the left side, on the west side, they're in dirt.
It should be noted, they're probably in the pavement.
Okay, so they're, all right, I'm not sure that's better, but, okay, so they're in the street. And, okay, so wait, let's back up a tiny bit. That power pole is, it looked like it was in the sidewalk.
I don't know that that's necessarily sidewalk there.
Okay.
Looks like it's just off-road paving.
All right, all right. And then on the west side, it's just rough area. So people will be in the street. All right, let me keep going. And the individual would need to get around that car into more traffic. And and we're still on the south side of Stevens Creek here, right? So an individual, so this vehicle's parked opposite direction on the wrong side of the street. So you would need to go around this vehicle, and same with the west side. Okay. And then were there a bridge there, you would then be approaching it. Okay, and then if we can jump to the opposite side and take a look around there. Okay, and I know.
Councilmember Moore, I assume that this is all by way of a question, right?
Well, it's about the ADA requirements and what we need to be providing for the city.
Okay, I just want to clarify the leading up to the question here.
Yeah, I just feel as though this is a liability for us as a city, what we're doing here. And how many times, by the way, has this particular issue been brought up to the city? Is this the first time this request has been made to have a rural designation?
No, we've had, I think, five or six in the last 10 years.
The same place, the same area.
This is the first time for this location.
Okay, okay, so you mean you've had five or six parts the city ask for a semi-rural designation? But this is the first time that this one has come.
For this particular section of Carmen Road, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I don't see any more hands up from council on questions, but Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is up now. Vice Mayor Chow?
Thank you. So I understand in the past that this issue has always been put on consent, and it's just approved. And initially, I was concerned, because we are, I think we will be planning to put Carmen Bridge there on either now, or at least we will do that in the future, I hope. And then there might be more foot traffic, bike traffic, who knows, eventually maybe vehicle traffic. And now I see especially the cars parked on the street, and then we are looking at every house in the future will be able to have ADUs, JADUs. So likely, there will be more cars parked on the street, then that means people really, yeah, they don't have, people have to walk into traffic. There is no other way to walk. I'm concerned about that, because Carmen Road is kind of a major road in that area.
Question, Vice Mayor Chow. Was there a question?
Oh, no.
Okay, great. Let me take this to members of the public that has a hand raised. So I'll remind the public that once the first member of the public is done speaking, I will not be allowing any other hands to speak. And so please, if you would like to give comment on this item, have your hand up by the time the first member of the public is done speaking. And that member of the public is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, so I'm curious, and maybe I missed it. Semi-rural designation does not only dictate sidewalk or no sidewalk. There's other things involved, so I believe, like, for example, light poles. If I'm correct about that, and the Carmen Bridge is something that would move forward if you could get the land access from the owner at the north side to do that, I mean, what's the vision? Is this gonna be a dark, no sidewalk place for people to go over the bridge? Or does it need to be safer than that? So I wouldn't just tackle this, if I'm right, I wouldn't just tackle this as sidewalks, but whatever else comes along was semi-rural. So I guess, that's just my question, just looking at the area and listening to the discussion. Is there something else that goes along with it that you need to consider?
Okay, well, thank you, Lisa. We still have a minute forty, so keep that clock running. And so would a member of staff like to speak to the public speaker's question? Anything that comes along? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, the resolution only removes the requirement for sidewalks, does not remove the requirement for streetlights. Streetlights are still required along this section of road.
Okay, great, thank you, Chad. All right, our next speakers are Peggy Griffin, Eric Lindskog, and Larry Dean, and those are the remaining public speakers on this item. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. I know that Chad could bring up an up-to-date map. This was one that I managed to get from the city on their website. It's all the circle, the purple ones are rural and semi-rural designated areas. So it's not just one area. I live in one of the semi-rural areas, and it's, we were, I think, the first in 2003, because we were county and became part of the city. We have roll curbs, our mailboxes are all on one side of the street, we have wooden telephone poles, we have 30-foot front setbacks, and the city three times tried to rezone us R1, and we fought back, because R1 front setback is 20 feet, and it would destroy the look of our neighborhood. And we have larger setbacks on the side, so we have an agricultural overlay. Many of these neighborhoods are similar. If you go to these neighborhoods, I mean, some of the streets are so small that it's really only one lane. And so to say that you're gonna put sidewalks in every semi-rural neighborhood, look at these places, go see them. They're different, and they're trying to preserve the look and feel of that neighborhood. So anyway, that's just some background, and I think Chad could bring up an up-to-date, but there are more, I think, than 10 areas in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Eric Lindskog. Welcome, Eric.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Good evening, we can hear you.
Ah, thank you. Yes, I'm Eric Lindskog. I am on the Bike Ped Commission, but I'm speaking here as a resident. So it strikes me, as we have Carmen Road Bridge on our bike and ped plan, it seems like if we go ahead and build this bridge, which seems totally feasible, then, you know, we'll likely get more people walking along the street, going to school and other places. And it doesn't seem wise then to remove the option to build sidewalks for these people, so they, you know, otherwise they would have to mix with cars, doesn't seem right. So I think it's not appropriate, given that we have a walking connection in this neighborhood, to turn it into a semi-rural designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'm sorry, were you done speaking? Okay, our next speaker is Larry Dean. Welcome, Larry.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and fellow councilpeople. Thank you for your great work here on behalf of the city. I am a longtime resident of that neighborhood, and I know there's concern about people safely walking, and all I can say is that there are a zillion people walking all hours of the day in the neighborhood. Of course, most of them are adults, but not all. So the community there is very used to that, so I just want to make that point. But my question really revolves around the issue of the Safe Routes to School designation not being compatible with the lack of sidewalks. And my question to staff, one, it's a little confusing, and two, the question is, how would, how would holding that section of Carmen to the standard of, if it's on the Safe Route to School map, therefore, it's got to have sidewalks, how does that align with the rest of Scenic Boulevard? Because Scenic probably runs, oh, maybe a quarter to a third of a mile, and it's on all of the Safe Route to School maps, but it's basically the same texture and topography as what you see on Carmen. So I see a little misalignment, I think, in the logic of the resolution that's been proposed. Maybe a little more thought has to be put into it, so those are my comments, and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry. And Larry is our last speaker, and keeping with, you need to have your hand up in order to, in order to speak by the end of.
I just wanted to ask the last resident a question.
Oh, sure. So Larry, if you could raise your hand again, I'll go ahead and, actually, yeah, go ahead and unmute yourself. And so Councilmember Willie has a question?
Yeah, try to be brief. So Larry, you said that you actually live on that section of road. I'm not quite sure I understand if you are indicating you feel a sidewalk is needed or a sidewalk that's not needed. I do like to hear from the affected residents on issues. And so again, can you let me know what you feel your position is on yes or no to sidewalks in that area?
Yeah, our home is one block over on Mira Vista, and so we're not right on Carmen, so to the extent that that's important to your analysis. I think a lot of it's psychological, in terms of the people being able to walk down the street and feel that they're quote-unquote "in the country," and those are feelings that probably came from 50 years ago rather than five or 10 years ago. The traffic, there's a fair amount of traffic on Janus. There's two ways to get into that neighborhood. One is Janus, and the other is off of Palm and Foothill Canyon Road. So Janus can have some traffic, and there's, there are speed bumps and stop signs to slow it down. So, but the way I look at it, I think it's plenty safe to walk, and you see that all hours of the day.
Okay, sorry, you're kind of flipping in and out, Larry. In and out, Larry. Um, but I, I, I think we have the favor of your answer, um, Councilmember Willie. So thanks, thanks very much and we'll go ahead and bring it back to council. Uh, to see whether there is, um, a motion on the table prior to any further discussion. Uh, Councilmember Moore, I see your hand is up.
Um, yes, I was wondering if staff could please pull up ordinance number nineteen twenty-five. It's not very long, but it's the one that's applicable to this item.
Okay, and, and did you want them to do that before a motion is put on the table or?
Yes.
Okay, very good. So ordinance nineteen twenty-five.
In particular, we, we need to be making findings.
Uh, nine, we're chapter nineteen point two-five?
Ordinance, ordinance number nineteen twenty-five.
In municipal code?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming that ordinance was codified in section fourteen oh four point zero four zero of the municipal code.
Yeah, we can look there.
Fourteen point oh four point zero four zero. Has the.
Well, I'll just get, I'll get to the point. Um, the city council, upon the recommendation of the city engineer, may approve. A rural or semi-rural designation for a street based upon the following findings. For either a rural or a semi-rural street designation. One, conventional improvements are not appropriate due to the character of the development in the area and surrounding developed properties lack such improvements. Two, if sidewalk is not to be provided, the street is not on a recognized route to school. And that's where I'm really having some problems. If sidewalk is not to be provided, traffic conditions on the street are such that pedestrians may travel safely along the street without a separate pedestrian pathway. There are no significant accessibility issues that will arise from the lack of sidewalk or the use of alternative sidewalk. And five, waiver of streetlights or alternative streetlights would not contribute to an unsafe condition for traffic, pedestrian travel. Or the security of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, so. And there we are for C, let's see, based on the following findings. I'm not sure I would have written it that way, but, um, okay, so we're under D for either a rural or semi-rural street designation. So the problem is that, uh, if, if we are considering it's, it's in, in the scope, in the universe of our work plan. Um, the Carmen Road Bridge, uh, and we, the, the public comments about that bridge is that they might have. Four hundred students traveling across the Carmen Road Bridge that would, and, and it's specifically. Uh, I want to say marketed, uh, as being a, a safe route for the students to get to the school. So that to me means that we should not be looking at this, um, at this time. And so, um, you know, I do appreciate the, the, the staff report, I think, in it. We would have been a little bit better off had we had the municipal code. Um, actually provided for us, so we could have read through that already and perhaps saved us some time here. And then, um, also be, have us advised about the potential for the Carmen Road Bridge project and what. Impediments there are, uh, with regards to moving ahead with that regarding the, the land acquisition needed. And then also, since we did look at the, the aerial view, I would have liked to have that photograph. Uh, in, in the package as well. I think that could have, um, perhaps saved us some time with that. But, uh, in, in my opinion, uh, because of, uh, the ADA requirement. That we can't make the findings that, uh, we are required to do in the municipal code. Um, I can't recommend that we, uh, move this project forward. Uh, somebody's going to have to, you know. Prove, prove to me otherwise that we can do that and I'm concerned about, uh, moving forward, um, with the Carmen Road Bridge project. What, how is this going to work together with that potential project?
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I'm going to ask, uh, council at this point. Is there anybody that would like to, uh, adopt this resolution? Uh, I'll, I'll take a straw poll. Um, and, and so, uh, I, I took Councilmember Moore's, your, your comments. Uh, as being a, a no, uh, but my understanding of it is that if we don't, if we don't move it, then it simply doesn't get adopted. And so Councilmember Willie, uh, could you speak to that, that straw poll question? Are you interested in adopting this resolution? Uh, you'll have to unmute yourself, Councilmember Willie.
Sorry about that. I, I'm going to answer it as best I can, so just bear with me. In order to, to, uh, actually move forward with something like this. I would need a couple things and that is, I would need a property by property review. When we're talking about taking somebody's front yard, either taking it away because as the city engineer said. The city is then going to own that nine feet of property. On a, on a property by property basis, has the owner, um, been. Uh, properly, uh, talked with about what it means to impact him? Then the second, uh, issue is. In that cul-de-sac where the, the vehicle traffic made the road look really small. I, I'm concerned, I would need more information. So if you did actually put in the required sidewalk width. Does it remove the ability of those residents to even park on the street? And the, is there even room for the street to still meet the street requirement? And so I'd need some pictures to show that those answers have already been, been answered or those questions have already been answered. And to move forward and say, yep, okay, change the designation. I, I don't see that we can, uh, with the amount of information we have here tonight.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. I, I take it as a, no, I'm not prepared at this point, given the information that we have. Okay, very good. Uh, let me go on, um. Councilmember Way, would you like to weigh in on this straw poll question? Are you interested?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Paul. I'm going to be brief. I think the reason this is on the agenda is one of the property part is going to be. Uh, we rebuilt, they need to decide whether they have to build a sidewalk or not. Uh, so if, my, my answer would be, I'm not interested in moving forward with this resolution because the other side has sidewalk. And if we don't have sidewalk on this side, it just doesn't look even. And I do, uh, I, I do think Carmen Bridge, once it's built, we need to have sidewalks. I, and, um, if we, if we don't approve now, then one house would have sidewalk, what sidewalk build? It, I think the problem, the whole nine homes would be, would have sidewalk eventually when they being, uh, developed. And, um, as to, um, Councilmember Willie, nine of the eleven homes actually petitioned on this one, so. Nine of them want to stay as semi-rural. But my position is I'm not interested in moving forward with it because I believe both, both side, both sides needs to have sidewalks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way, uh, and then thank you for the brevity of your comments. Vice Mayor Chow. Uh, I will go to you next and I, I will say that. Um, we don't have the votes, uh, to pass, even if the motion is placed on the table. Uh, I think you will essentially determine whether a motion can be placed on the table because of course we need two people to do so. So Vice Mayor Chow, any, um, weigh in on the straw poll question?
Um, yeah, I also have concerns about this. This is very piecemeal. Yeah, and I'm concerned about if when cars, more cars are parked, parked on the street, there will be no safe place to walk.
Okay, well, I'm not hearing an appetite for, um, placing a motion on the table right now. And so with that. Uh, we will go on to item number, oh, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up. Did you want to make a final comment before we, uh, close off this item?
Um, yes, it, should, should this come back to us? It actually, in the, in the municipal code, uh, you need to have two-thirds of the property line. Uh, property owners along the affected streets having signed the petition. Um, so it seemed as though we had property owners on one side of the street, so if this is to come back, that part would need to be met. Um, and this, this couldn't, this cannot be a recognized route to school, which means that. You know, hopes for the Carmen Road Bridge would need to go away because that, that would cause that issue. Also, as my understanding from what Chad said is that the city actually does own the right of way. And has the right to put in the sidewalk because they already own that property. I'm not sure about that. And I'm concerned on the north side, if, is that the case there as well? Because there is no sidewalk on the north side of Stevens Creek Boulevard. So I did have a little bit of a clarify, little bit of a clarifier there about who owns that, that property. Um, and there, there is a comment in here about, uh, I'm, uh, some code in here about having adequate drainage. So I still. And, and going back, I do think we have an accessibility issue that is going to be caused. Um, by having this designation, should it come forward? So I do want to know about the right of way and if the city already owns the land in order to have the sidewalk there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comment and the request, um, Councilmember, uh, Moore and. Uh, seeing, seeing no appetite to bring a motion onto the table, I will go ahead and close this out. And move to item number nine, the subject of consent calendar, item number nine, which has been polled. Is a proposed amendment to the professional consulting services agreement between the city of Cupertino. And HDL Econ Solutions of an additional forty thousand eight hundred dollars as an extension. Of the contract terms and conditions to provide supplemental economic development staffing services. For Cupertino through the end of, uh, the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, uh, of this year. So, um, Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the topic?
Uh, actually, it's going to be, um, Mr. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development.
Okay, great. Welcome, Director Fu. Oh, unfortunately, I think we might be running into a technological issue. Um, I do see you're unmuted, but we can't actually hear, uh, you, uh, Ben. So.
Hold on.
Yeah.
Ben, you want to try it again?
I do see you have an earpiece in, uh, maybe unplugging that and trying, uh, not, not really sure if. This might require a reset, unfortunately. Nope, not hearing you yet.
I could do.
Well, Madam City Manager, did you want to try to?
Yeah, I can try and do a summary. Um.
Okay.
I don't have the details that Ben would have and maybe in the meantime, he can figure out.
Testing, testing.
Oh, there you go.
All right.
I just talked long enough and his audio started to work.
Welcome.
I apologize. I, I tested, it worked earlier. I apologize. Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, City Manager Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Allow me to share my screen with you. Uh, I have a brief presentation here. All right, is that coming across? Okay.
It is, yes.
Perfect, thank you, sir. So the item is introduced, uh, on the subject line and the, uh, the agenda. Which is the amendment to the service agreement. The current contract is to not exceed a hundred and seventy thousand total at a hundred and seventy dollars per hour. That's, uh, calculated about a thousand hours for the consultant. And as of January thirty-first, eight hundred and thirty hours have already been billed. Uh, obviously, um, that's two months ago, we have a, uh, additional work, uh, captured as well, but not yet billed. So a quick background, uh, when the contract was, um, getting finalized last July, it was anticipated that we'd have about seventy-eight hours. A month of work to just sort of maintain, uh, status quo, uh, as it was before. However, the COVID nineteen pandemic, um, you know, unexpectedly. Increased our, our demand and workload, uh, and services to the public as well. So here's a list of, um, increased, uh, staff hours and work items. Uh, it's outlined in the staff report as well, so I won't go into each one of them in detail unless you have any questions. This is the, a, a list of our typical sort of ongoing routine, uh, ED work, uh, performed by the position. It's also in the staff report as well. So what we're asking for right now is an increase of forty thousand eight hundred dollars. Which equals to two hundred, additional two hundred and forty hours to complete the current tasks. As, as envisioned for the, for the fiscal year until June thirtieth. With that, um, that is my, our recommended action. I will, however, point out that there was a, uh, a typo in the staff report when it indicated a hundred and sixty thousand total. Uh, when in fact, a hundred and seventy. The, uh, contract as amended was attached, as attachment A has a correct amount. As is reflected on the, on the presentation as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Our consultants here as well have any detailed questions for her. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Our first question is from Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, my question's actually for the city attorney and I'm concerned. That this might be a Brown Act issue because it just seems a little awkward that we're talking about. It, what is essentially employment, extending a contract, we have the individual present and, um. It, 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 maybe it's just awkward, um, but it, it seems like it. Possibly could be something that, that belongs in a closed session, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, just to clarify, I don't see a Brown Act issue here. Um. It, uh, I believe you're probably referring to Angela Sway. She is actually not an employee of the city. She is, um. A, a contractor who works for HDL and this is a contract that would be, this is a contract, um. Action, um, extending that contract and it doesn't involve an employment issue. I think she's here to answer questions in case, um, anyone has any, but it's, you know, it's not uncommon for contractors to be present. When their contracts are up for consideration, uh, by council.
Okay, and then would you happen to know if this, this particular contract was put out to bid? So I, I believe, uh, Angela had been an employee. And then some, at some point it changed from employee status to working for another company and that company was contracted with. Um, so that was put out for bid, there was some kind of competition, that, that sort of thing?
I'm going to ask the city manager to answer that question because I think she was, may recollect more correctly the process.
Okay.
That is a good question because we have a, we, the city has a general. Contract with HDL, the same organization to support us, uh, with all the reporting of, um. Sales tax and all the other things that have to do with administrative services. So I am not recollecting if we took this task and added it to that contract. Or if we went out for bid separately for this. Uh, maybe Ben can, can clarify. But you're absolutely right, the situation, Councilmember Moore, was, um, Angela was an employee prior. And then, um. And then she went to work for HDL, but they flipped around and we became a client. Or we became, um, one of the cities that she supports. And, but I can't answer the question off the top of my head. I don't remember.
Okay, so that, that's some information that I would, uh, want us to have. Um, and what was the, how did the bid work? What was in, what was in the bid package?
I think it's unlikely that it went out to bid.
Is there?
I, I don't recall that happening, but I think the answer is likely no. Um, and there's not a bid requirement for professional services agreements. As, as there is for like public works contracts. So, uh, but, you know, again, I, I, I think neither of us are recollecting clearly, so we will get back to you with that answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, if we could go back to slide three. Uh, when I saw slide three and I tried to read that, I was confused. I think Councilman Moore has really, um, better explained, so it's not quite so confusing. That second one, when I was reading this, you know, I was kind of caught off guard, you know, you, you know. Increase a hundred and seventy thousand for economic development staffing services. Provided by HDL Senior Advisor Angela. And so I, I saw that, I, I was kind of bewildered, you know, that. I, I think it's so important to have a clear, uh. A clear situation where it's not confusing to our community. As to what's going on. Me being on the city council, well. I'm a licensed engineer, I also provide licensed engineering services to the city. And I would say that, no, I couldn't do that because there's a kind of a, it wouldn't look good. And so I, I just struggle with that. Now with what Councilman Moore kind of, uh, helped, uh, describe. Um, I, I think in order to move forward, we need to know more about what's, uh, what's behind this. Um, you know, I'm thinking that for a contract. Of a hundred and seventy thousand, whenever that was negotiated, it had to come to the city council for review. And I would hope they understood that there was. And I would hope they understood that there was something that wasn't going to be very clear to the community as to how that's being handled. Well, I don't know how that was done, but now here we are faced with it. I think we really do need to better understand this working relationship, services provided, and whether or not it should be competitively bid or not. So I'm struggling with that. Thank you.
Is there a question, Councilmember Willie, on that, or did you?
No, I think the question was asked by Councilman Moore, and I think the city manager said she couldn't answer it. And so, you know, my hand was up for that, so I don't want it to go unsaid.
Okay, understood. So you had a reiterated question of?
Yeah, the importance for us understanding that.
Okay, got it. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so previously, I think the CTA paid Angela as regular employees thirty hours for, I don't know what, how much per hour that amount to as a regular employee. I'm curious about that. And then also, since this is now by hour, I wonder if we have an accounting of how many hours spent on what. I see that mobile vendors is done by consultant too, and a council work program items. Then should those continue to be done by consultant? Maybe that's something we should review going forward.
Would staff like to speak to Vice Mayor Chow's question?
Let me, yes. Let me, you go ahead, Ben, and answer that question. I have the answer to the other question.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. Vice Mayor Chow. In terms of the mobile vending item, for example, it was done in-house as Angela was a part-time employee with the assistance of the planning division. We had planning staff on board, coordinator FRO as well. We did hire outside consultant, a separate planning firm to conduct the bulk of the data research analysis. We do have invoices from the current consultant Angela works for, HDL, and invoices do itemize the hours as assigned to the project, just like we would with all the other contracts, contractors. And I hope that answers my part of the question, Deb. I'm not sure which other part you were going to help out.
I was going to answer, I was going to answer Councilmember Moore's question regarding the competition. It was, as I stated, we have an existing HDL contract that supplies us with a lot of the economic data and administrative services support, like related to taxes, for example. And we rolled this particular task underneath that because the city still needed economic development support. And at that time, we did not know what level was needed. When Angela was a city employee, she was, I believe, a thirty-two-hour employee, so part-time. And many cities now, because of the catastrophic effects of COVID on the local economies, have hired full-time staff on, to focus on, for us, it would be small business and be the liaison to the chamber for the city. So that's how it happened.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, thank you. Are there, do you have any other questions, Vice Mayor Chow, at this point?
I'm just curious, can we get the accounting of the number of hours spent on different projects later?
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah, we can provide the invoices, sure.
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, and we have Councilmember Wei next.
Yes, so I did some calculation. A thousand hours is about twenty hours a week. And I think Angela is directly under City Manager, right? So.
No, she works kind of matrix, so she works for Community Development.
Right.
It's the city manager's office.
Right, okay, so, and I did see her work in the community, you know, with businesswomen, with a lot of things. So I think I've seen her work in our community, and I really appreciate it. So this item is to approve a proposed amendment to the existing contract.
Just to get us through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so if the council would like to know how this, well, it's a contract, right? So it's when it's due for renewal, I guess we can, you can advise the council or move forward.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. And I did want to just provide, you know, one round of questions. Councilmember Moore, your hand is up now. If you have a quick follow-up question, that's fine. But I'll provide that same opportunity for the rest of the council, if that's the case.
Okay, so you are able to go to Transparent California to find information out. So I'm curious, what is the total amount expected? Because it seems like there's quite a jump in costs. So unfortunately, because, you know, the awkward part comes from having a city employee then move in all their projects, then move to this contract situation. So I'm going to have to just assume that the same work, plus what you're saying, there's some COVID part to it, the same work is now moved to this contract. Is that correct?
Probably not all of her work, but I would say that most of this forty thousand dollars, forty thousand eight hundred dollars extra or unplanned or increase due to all the projects that are related to the COVID response. I mean, all of the grant, you know, the grant program for small businesses, there's a list on one of Ben's slides. So those are really out of bed with what our normal level of effort would be. So to me, it's a kind of a, probably, I should have anticipated it more, but we didn't run out of hours till we could get this done, so.
Okay, and I just want to bring up that the Economic Development Committee has, to my knowledge, it is not codified, and there are meetings that have been held for that. So perhaps the mayor had brought this issue up also, and I was wondering if he would like to weigh in on that, and what does it mean that it's not codified and that these meetings are still continuing?
Not at this time. I want to move us along and have a fair and quick round of questions. So I'll speak to your question or comment when we bring this back after the public commentary. But we do have Vice Mayor Chow with her hand up, so a brief follow-up question, Vice Mayor Chow.
Well, the Economic Development Committee didn't even meet once last year, not once. So, but I'd like to find out, all the costs done by consultants, they are still reimbursable under COVID, right?
That's very possible, yes. We can transfer some of the CARES Act dollars to it. They do have to have a direct connection to COVID, and they also have to be in certain categories. So we'll definitely look at that. And then as far as the invoices or the accounting of hours you wanted to see, that's how it's charged. You'll see exactly what she's been working on.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Thank you, Madam City Manager. We are on to comments from the public, and we have Peggy Griffin with her hand raised. And I'll just remind everyone that if your hand is up by the time Peggy is done speaking, then I will call on you. If it is not, I will not. And so Peggy, you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening, city council staff. I really feel that this position should be in-house. I believe that you have somebody that is, then you have somebody that is working on the best interest of the city and not on a year-to-year basis based on a contract. Whether you decide that in June, the end of June, or you do it now, I don't care. But I really think it should be in-house. I also feel that the two very, I think, the most important things that this position should be doing is in Exhibit A, Attachment A, page three, which is the Exhibit A one, there are the second and third bullet under scope of work. The staff, the person shall be knowledgeable and informed about Cupertino community and economic development opportunities available for Cupertino. Number two, maintain relationships with property owners, property managers, and commercial brokers to stay knowledgeable and informed of space availabilities and tenant needs. And I'm going to point out the Outback site. The Bagel Street owner only got contacted yesterday by the manager to see what they could do, and was only offered the Nosh site. And that's twenty thousand dollars a month rent, which he can't afford. And I think the minute the city became aware of businesses being kicked out, somebody from the city should have outreach and said, oh, and point out other cities. There's the roasted coffee bean site. There's several other sites that may not be as expensive, but they weren't brought up. So this business is going to leave Cupertino rather than be given help relocating. This is a really key economic development task, and it's not being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren, followed by Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Lisa.
Hello again. So I'm with Councilmember Moore that this is awkward. I have questions about this. Councilwoman Willie said something about council having say in this when this happened originally. And to my knowledge, it happened a year ago in April where the contract for a consultant replaced an employee. And I'm not sure that there wasn't time a few months before April where there was sort of double duty going on or something, where there was a non, I don't understand it because there's, the timing, as I see it in places, it doesn't really match. So the hundred and seventy thousand dollars is, what I understand, there's a limit. There's always been a limit to what the city manager can do as decision without involving council. And I think a hundred and seventy thousand is the magic number. So if that's what was chosen and that eliminated the need for council to weigh in on this change, that's a little concerning that now with two months left, there's more being added. I'm really uncomfortable with this, and it has nothing, well, I won't say it has nothing, but it doesn't have all to do with Angela as a person or her position. And that's where this is awkward. I just feel like something's not right. And I too have wondered for years exactly what that position is. And I've transacted, you know, I've spoken to Angela, invited or let her know about events that I thought might interest her in that position. And she has always responded, and she's gone to some, and I, but I still never really understood what it all is. And I agree with Peggy that, and I'm not, codifying the committee, codifying this job or this position, consultancy, whatever it is now, is really important. And I'm thinking, there may have been COVID tasks that came into play in the last year, but in place of something else. Because when COVID hit, gears changed. Others parts of the position probably had no reason for attention. So that time should have been put toward COVID, but it doesn't seem like it should be extra time by any stretch. But I don't know. It's just, this is my thoughts. I also emailed last week to pull this item because I have concerns about it. I really do. I have more concerns, but I don't have more time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Our next and final speaker on this item is Gilbert Wong. Welcome, Gilbert.
Good evening, Mayor Darcy Paul, Vice Mayor Chow, the City Council, and Madam City Manager. I'm here acting as myself only. I think that tonight's conversation is very interesting and very good. I wish it was on the public hearing versus on the consent calendar because usually items on the consent calendar is pretty straightforward. Number one, I want to start off that Angela Sway has been an excellent economic development manager. When I worked with her on the Cupertino City Council, and today, as I'm off the council, I see her at the chamber representing the city of Cupertino very strongly. She has reached out to both small and large businesses. And as Councilmember Wei said, the topic tonight is about the extension of her time, okay? This is not an inquisition about what is the role of the economic development manager, what your gripes are regarding the economic development committee. I understand that, and those are legitimate concerns that Councilmember Moore has brought up, Vice Mayor Chow has brought up. But if we're talking about that is Angela's time is valued. If the city manager makes a recommendation to add additional time, and we are in unusual times with COVID-19, businesses are not doing very well. We're trying to encourage people to go back to businesses, to eat out, but people are really scared. And you need someone who knows the community very well. I understand that there, I didn't even know that she was on a contract because when I was on council, she was an employer. Now she's on contract. These are all legitimate questions, but not during the public hearing time. I think that we need to stay focused, and the city manager's recommendation is either a thumbs up or a thumbs down that do you agree of taking from her budget, you look at where the funds are coming from. She's using her budget to say, I'm going to put where I believe businesses need help, where my residential money is going to. So I urge the city council to support the city manager and pass additional hours. And when you look at the budget again, do you want to spend a hundred and seventy thousand dollars? That is the time to do it, not on a consent item. I urge the council to support I on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert, and we'll bring that back to council at this point, seeing, having no other public comments. Would anyone like to bring a motion on this item for the purposes of continuing a discussion? I see Councilmember Moore with her hand raised.
Well, actually, for this item, I'd like us to have more information. I don't feel like we have adequate information about what the services have been provided and the scope of work, what's been done, what's the cost increase. I'm just doing a rough calculation, and I'm coming up with an eighty percent increase over what was previously paid from staff. And then I was concerned that we're being told that some of the work is not, did not move over to HDL. So I think I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had more information about this before we made a decision.
Okay, all right. Are there any other council members with regard to the request for a motion to be set forth?
So why do I? Sorry.
I'm sorry, who's that?
This is Hong.
Oh, Councilmember Wei. Very good.
Yes, Mayor Paul. Why don't I make a motion, and if we have a second, then we can make a discussion because I would like to ask Deb to, you know, to elaborate on this. This is her budget, this is her staff, and she feels the need. So I would make a motion to approve the proposed amendment of an additional forty thousand eight hundred to prevent an interruption in economic development staffing services.
Is there a second to this motion set forth by Councilmember Wei? Okay, at this point, seeing no second, I will go ahead and open it up for a round of comments since we did have an opportunity from Councilmember Moore to provide commentary. Councilmember Willie? And you'll need to unmute yourself, John.
Twice in one night. I think I'd like to, I don't know that it's a motion, but I'd like to say, you know, bring this back at the next council meeting with the additional information. I think Councilman Moore has very eloquently described what we should see, and that is, you know, more about what the contract was for, the number of hours, the description of duties, who's covering the duties that were not covered once Angela went, moved over. And then, okay, of that original budget, the hundred and seventy, how did that fuel in? how did that, how did that fuel in the fuel tank get used up? And then so that then we can see what the the refill is going to do in more detail. And then at that point, I I don't want to see anybody work for for free, but I also want to be sure that we know how it's being used. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Way, your hand is up, followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, yes, I I agree if fellow council members need to more details, but I think maybe manager Deb can answer some of the questions here already because this is her staff, this is her budget and she feels the need. So must she maybe, or or maybe she wants to report back later?
We can do whatever council wants. I would like to avoid an interruption as we transition. I happen to agree with members of the public that said this should be a city position. But as we transition to that, I can't just drop it. Otherwise, we have no support in economic development for any of our businesses. And I agree Angela has been a key to a lot of the relationships that we have around the city. However, she is only part time. Even when she was a government employee, she was part time and I always thought it should be full time, which is something I would have to come back to council for. So I'm happy to provide more information prior to bringing this back at some point. But I would like to prevent interruption in services such that we get to next fiscal year and I can propose what I'm going to propose.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Manager. Vice Mayor Chow.
So with the, so the, originally one hundred sixty thousand was planned for the entire year, fiscal year. And now we are estimating for the remainder of the year. So now it's April. So May, June, two more months. We will need another two hundred and forty hours of work. So does that mean we have exhausted the a thousand hours we had planned for?
I think so because we're, we still have, we pay bills and arrears. So we've already gotten services for February and March. So that forty thousand eight hundred is to include payment of the services already rendered.
So forty thousand, wait, so forty thousand eight hundred is for additional two hundred and forty hours for services already rendered. That means even with.
Make sure I said that right then.
Okay.
Yeah, so we received invoice up to through January twenty twenty one. So that like like Deb said, city manager said, there's already work, the work continues on February, March and also until today. So we, this this forty forty thousand eight hundred plus or or two hundred and forty hours is to also cover that as well and get us through the end of June thirtieth.
So from the invoice, in January, already we exhausted a thousand hours that we contracted for.
No, I apologize. Through January, we we had accumulated about eight hundred and thirty hours total. So we have about another hundred and seventy, hundred and sixty hours, something like that left. And and that may cover February, March. We just haven't got those bills yet, right? It may cover February, March. It may not be enough. We don't know yet. So so the addition is to make sure when a bill comes, we're able to cover those invoices as well as upcoming two and a half months of services.
So this is estimating till, might be enough until June thirtieth.
Right.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
For for the next year, the budget, Deb might have other proposal.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And but then if we don't approve anything today, hours will still accumulate, right?
Well, there'll come a point in time where we have to stop because you wouldn't want to obligate the government to pay for. We're obligated to pay for services rendered, right? So what I would do is if there, if there's not a good prognosis, then we just don't have an economic development manager from whatever time the dollars literally run out to the end of June.
Okay.
And and that and that may be, may be tonight, actually. So.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the cost. It's I don't think that would be good.
Right, well, let me, let me go ahead and make my comments now before I go for any further rounds of comments. Because I think everyone has spoken post the public being on the way in. And going to Councilmember Moore's comment with regard to the Economic Development Committee, because I did indicate that I would speak to that during this time. I I have spoken in the past with regard to a desire to have a charter for the Economic Development Committee. And you you know, we we did have a work plan session on this last week. I'll note that nobody actually put that as a high priority. I think it is important that we should have meetings that actually have a written purpose and a a structure and a function. You know, I think, I think overall, you know, looking at this particular this particular function, I think Angela has done a a good job over the years. I I think when I see this particular function, I know that it it did go out because I guess, I I guess as an employee, she had transitioned out and then essentially was brought back in under this contract. But I remember at the time that the city manager was couching it in such a manner that, you know, actually this adheres to our economic benefit because it's actually more affordable, right? And so, you know, I I have to consider that when I look at where we're where we're at right now. The other two things I need to consider is the fact that this has been a rather unusual year. So there are certainly additional obligations that people need to, just as a general matter, you know, speak to. At the same time, I I understand and appreciate the sentiment that, you know, people look at our retail situation in Cupertino and as a reflection of quality of life, they do have these questions over time as to whether the 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 needs and desires of the the residential population is is really being answered with regard to that. Or is it really more of a community where people kind of come in from out of town and, you know, see it as a as a resource and a and a profit center? And so I think, you know, and I'm not trying to malign that, but the fact of the matter is there are there are sentiments, you know, within our community that go, are we really taking a strong look at what we need to be doing in order to encourage and facilitate and perpetuate the existence of, you know, not just the commercial office presence, but also across the board retail opportunities as relate to the the so-called user experience, if you will. So so that's, that's related to that point. I mean, the other, the other factor I take into account is, you know, we 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 have, we we have personnel across the board and I I ask myself, how has that responsiveness been? And and how has the, you know, performance in in those times where we need someone to step up, you know, generally been? And and I would say, you know, I I mean, I don't, I I I would say that most recently, I was actually very grateful for for Angela's performance and I I don't know if you would necessarily, you know, describe it as an economic development, you know, issue, but when we were talking about the the purchase of a new building on Torrey Avenue on the corner of Pacifica, ten four fifty five Torrey, you know, there was a time when I was actually tasked with with signing the purchase agreement. And, you know, someone gave me the purchase agreement and and basically said, you have to sign it within the next few hours. And so, you know, on behalf of the city, I go, well, you know, let's make sure we have certain contingencies. Let's make sure we're able to back out of this upon a review. And, you know, there was a whole team of people, right, in in this email chain, including, you know, real estate people. And it was actually, you know, when I, when I really came down to it, I said, look, you know, I want to know where this provision is in this boilerplate purchase agreement that says we have the right to withdraw, you know, upon the inspection contingency. And it was actually Angela who identified this. And and so in in that moment, in in a very critical moment, I think she did a good job stepping up. Now, is that, is that enough to offset, you know, any other, you know, like stated needs of the community as well as, you know, the idea that maybe a year ago right now, we were looking at a cost savings, taking into effect the very, the very extreme unusualness of this last year? I'm not so sure. But, you know, I I will say if a motion were on the table, I could say, fine. But I do respect the, you know, the desire from other council members to have more information. One thing I will say though, you know, I I don't want to take away any decisional authority from the public and by extension, its elected representatives. This is the city's budget. This is, this is the public's budget. And if we're asked to allocate this money, this comes from the general fund. This is in a pot of money that the city manager already has. So I just, I just want to clarify that point. So that's not used as some kind of misguided rationalization in order to encourage us to proceed. So those are my thoughts on it. I don't see any other hands up at this point. But Councilmember Moore.
Since it sounds as though we are going to be receiving some more information about that, I would like to have the original contract if it hasn't been clear because I I'm trying to understand the the timeframe of it. The reason why I say that is because the, when I look at the the new one, the amended one, it's it seems to be referencing August third, twenty twenty. So I'm kind of wondering when the start time is and so I can do some math on that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, we don't have a motion and so we're left in the same situation that we were on the previous item. So if staff could take the comments and the direction and bring that back to us, much appreciated. We are on to item number ten. And so item number ten is, I believe, relating to density bonus. Consider amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code sections nineteen dot five six dot O three O A and nineteen dot five six dot O three O F. And that is indeed related to the density bonus ordinance to incentivize the development of affordable housing by allowing for density bonuses of up to forty percent. And this is an item that was continued from April sixth. And so this is under a second reading of ordinances in public hearings, although I I'm wondering, am I misreading this? We're actually under, we should be under first reading of ordinances here. So Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the staff person that will be presenting this item?
I think it's, well, I would hand it off to Ben to introduce, but I think it's going to be Hugh, Hugh Gosh, Planning Manager.
Great, welcome.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Ben Fu, Director of Development. That's correct. Hugh Gosh, our Planning Manager, will be conducting most of the presentation for us tonight. We also have a consultant on board as well that can assist us. But this is a first reading of a public hearing. I think the agenda has the second reading of ordinances, but there are no items in that particular section. So it just moves on to the public hearing. So this is the first item on the public hearings, first reading. But yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for reading the subject heading. And this has been, council has reviewed this back in December, I believe, and approved the ordinance here, I'm sorry, approving the 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 amendments. And now we're back with the ordinance. So with that, Hugh, take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. And can you see my screen? I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the, give a short presentation on the municipal code amendments related to the density bonus ordinance that Ben just discussed. This particular item is part of the Affordable Housing Strategy City Work Program item from the fiscal year twenty 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 one. It includes updates to the city's density bonus ordinance, which includes inclusion of the adopted housing program in the density bonus ordinance and potentially other amendments that the council will potentially review later this year. Just wanted to point out that in late last year, an order, a state law under Government Code Section six five nine one five basically amended existing state law and allowed housing developments to become eligible for a density bonus based on the percentage of a very low, low or moderate income units provided in the development. And that state law was amended with AB twenty three forty five to allow a maximum density bonus to increase from thirty five percent to fifty percent in exchange for a rather small four to five percent increase in affordability. But if the city adopted its own housing program or has an ordinance that allowed these bonuses that exceed thirty five percent, the city could enforce its own program and not be subject to the changes in state law. And council did in late, in December, adopted its own housing program. On December fifteenth, we, the council adopted the program as shown on this table to allow density bonuses of up to forty percent and initiated a zoning code amendment. And at this point, we are presenting these changes that are necessitated by adoption of that housing program with this municipal code amendment. Table nineteen point five six point zero three zero of chapter nineteen point five six of the municipal code is proposed to be replaced to allow the bonuses indicated in this table. Additionally, a minor reference correction to show the maximum density bonus of forty percent is proposed in section nineteen point five six point zero three zero F. I did want to point out that there was a a small mathematical error in the table and that has been corrected with the ordinance that has been presented to council. And I'll discuss that more later. In essence, between eleven to twenty, nineteen percent, sorry, in essence, depending on the affordability target and depending on how much of that of those units you are providing in a housing development, you would get either a two and a half percent density bonus, a one and a half percent density bonus or a one percent density bonus, depending on what level of housing you're providing. To verify that the city's program would incentivize affordable housing, the city asked Ms. Sally Nielsen of Hosroth Economics Group to evaluate the program. And the evaluation found that the city's program would incentivize rental housing production. And so basically, for condo development, though neither the proposed program nor AB twenty three forty five improves the rate of return over the past requirements. There are other reasons to approve a program like this. All but one of the developers of Cupertino's housing element sites have applied for density bonuses using the incentives provided prior to the passage of AB twenty three forty five. And these include the developers for the Valco project, the Marina project and the Westport project. The legislative history for AB seventeen sixty three, which was adopted in twenty nineteen, which authorized an eighty percent density bonus, shows that one purpose of the bill was to enable affordable developers to compete for a site against market-grade developers. And the California Rural Legal Assistance Foundation and the Western Center on Law and Poverty both opposed the formula contained in twenty three forty five, AB twenty three forty five, because they were concerned that AB twenty three forty five might disincentivize the production of very low-income units contained in hundred percent affordable projects. And they instead advocated for maintaining the density for affordability ratio following the same pattern as density bonus law prior to the passage of AB twenty three forty five. And I did want to note that the the housing program that was adopted by council and is now being codified does exactly that. The Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments on February twenty third, twenty twenty one, and they recommended approval of the ordinance amendments on a four one vote, with Commissioner Capile voting no. I did want to go back to that typographical error that I discussed earlier. There, it's just been corrected and there were also some clarifying edits that were made by moving the location of these footnotes to better line up with the text, the text footnotes that were there. No other changes have been proposed. And it should be noted that the conclusions from Ms. Nielsen's report do not change as a result of the corrections noted above, since the improvements in feasibility were all related to the very low-income units and rental housing. Therefore, the change in the low-income numbers did not change those conclusions and that the change is identified and read on this table. With that, I would like to conclude my presentation with the recommended action for the council to take tonight, that the council conduct the first reading of the ordinance, draft ordinance as proposed with the packet. that, uh, the council conduct the first reading of the ordinance, draft ordinance as, uh, uh, proposed with the packet. Thank you. And, um, we do have, uh, as Ben mentioned, Barb Kautz here to help answer questions as well.
Great. Thank you, Pugh, and welcome, Barb. So let's go ahead and ask questions of, uh, Pugh and staff for the presentation at this point. Um, I'm gonna go ahead since we're, um, we're at 10:15 now. I, I would like to get to our last item as well. And given the, uh, timing of it, uh, we do have ample time before midnight to cover this as well as item 13. So, um, are there any questions from council? I'll go ahead and set a, a two-minute limit initially for questions. Council member Willie.
Yeah, if, uh, you could put back the table, I just want to be sure that I and the community understand, um, what those numbers represent, the, their table with the different.
I'm happy to do that. Just one second. I believe this is the table that you were talking about.
Yep, yep. So if we take the existing, and let's say that we have a, uh, project and, and it was going to, under the general plan, the, uh, 100 units. And under the existing one, uh, if the developer were to say, well, I want the 35% density bonus. So he's gonna get 130, he's gonna get to build 135 units. Can you very briefly just say, of those 135 units, how many would be very low, low, moderate and sen- uh, senior citizen? Or what, what would that represent?
So I do have a slide to indicate the, um, as an example, and I can, I hope I can get to it in just one second.
Oh, excellent. 100 units, okay.
Correct. So, um, this is an example for a, for a rent project, uh, the base project under the existing conditions that are in the code today. Um, uh, it basically compares what the change would be. So under the current code, uh, there would be 100 apartments. Um, and then our BMR requirement currently is 9% VLI and 6% LI. So very low income and low income. There's a proportion in which you have to provide each of those units. Um, and so that does not change. Uh, there are no changes to that. So developer would still have to provide nine very low income units and six low income units. From a density bonus affordable units, uh, perspective, the developer would have to provide 11 very low income units to get a 35% bonus. And so ultimately in a development, potentially, we could get 11 very low income units and six low income units in that development.
Up from nine and six without the additional 35 units.
With the 35 unit bonus.
Well, with the 35 unit bonus, is it an extra 11 and 6 or it's only an extra 2?
Extra 2.
Yes. So, so if he were to build 100, it would be 6 to 9. If he then said, well, I want to build 135 units, I'm gonna give you 11 and 6. So only 2 units. But yet he gets to build 35 more units, of which 33 would be at market rate.
Um, actually, the off, well, yes, technically, correct.
Okay. So then in the, in the new one with 40%, and you said that under the existing 100 units, 9, 6, density bonus 13, so it'd be 13 and 6. So now he gets 140 units, of which he's only increasing 4 units. So he's building 40 units and only 4 of those 40 extra units are going to be, uh, of, you know, in the affordable category. And so now, yeah, so that's my question is, okay, if I, if my thinking there is correct, if the community realizes those are the numbers, then I can come back to it in deliberation. Thank you.
Okay, great. And I, I did provide you about half a minute of my time, council member Willie. Uh, we have council member Moore next.
Okay, um, thank you, Pugh, for the presentation. I was wondering if you could put the previous slide back up. And, uh, my question, I, I interpret the very low to low income 60-40 ratio from the below market, um, manual, uh, differently. So i- if I were to be calculating it, uh, that I wouldn't call those density bonus affordable units that the, uh, if, if they wanted to qualify for the 35%, that they would need the 11 VLI and then they would need a 60-40 split. Um, so I, I see that you did the 60-40 split on the 9, 6 and then, and then now you're showing 11, 6. So, um, I'm kind of curious from a legal standpoint if, how that, how that works when we're saying that you have to have a 60-40, um, split.
Uh, would, would you like me to respond?
Yes, thanks. Hello, Barbara.
Yeah, thanks. The 60-40 split applies only to the city's BMR units. That's a BMR unit requirement. And so in this case, the developer, let's say in the, uh, the developer elects to provide more affordable units than the city requires. And for those, the cities, uh, the 60-40 split does not, does not apply. Does that make sense?
Um, yes. Okay. And then I have another question, um, we, with regards to that below market rate manual. So I understand that interpretation, uh, which you just gave. Um, but we have, there's other requirements in there regarding the, um, number of bedrooms of the units and, uh, there's some mention about the size compatibility and, uh, finishes. And, and dispersal actually is in there too. So, um, I'm concerned that because these are requirements that need to be met in order to qualify for the density bonus units, what we've been seeing is the developers coming back in, in wanting to take either a waiver or a concession of the requirements they needed to meet, um, to, to qualify. And is that something, uh, since they're getting an increased incentive here to add more market rate units, um, is that something that we can really put our foot down on, uh, in, for projects in the future? So that, uh, we're not seeing, uh, miniscule, uh, BMR units and these massive, uh, massive, um, market rate units, uh, which don't have the same number of bedrooms, uh, which we've seen that, um.
Okay, I provided your extra half minute for my time.
Thank you.
A, a brief, a, a brief, uh, answer from staff and then we'll move on to any other questions.
Um, in order to get a, in, you know, in order to get the dispersal requirements or the size requirements waived, the developer would need to show either that they, uh, that they physically prevent the number of units the developer is entitled to, which would, which in most cases would be difficult. Or that the developer can't afford, you know, basically that the additional cost of the alar- of the larger units, um, makes the, you know, he, that the developer needs to save money on the affordable units, basically to make the project feasible. I guess that would be a summary. Um, so in this case, with the higher bonuses, the city's providing more, uh, more market rate units to the developer, but that would all need to be analyzed in some kind of an economic analysis about whether develop, the developer would still need the smaller units. There's another issue that the staff asked us to look at, where we haven't reached any definite conclusions. And that's whether allowing a developer to provide all studio and one-bedroom units, say, might, you know, in a project that has a wide range of units, might constitute some kind of discrimination against families with children. Uh, that it would have be more difficult for families with children to live in those units. And so might violate the, the federal and state fair housing laws. But we haven't, um, we haven't entirely reached a conclusion about that.
And I will say there is an additional, um, item that will be coming to council, looking at broader updates to the city's BMR program and density bonus ordinance that, that will come on the heels of the item that's before you now, which is simply about adopting, uh, the housing program into the municipal code.
Okay, very good. Um, so I don't see other council members with their hands raised for questions. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow or Councilmember Wei, did you have questions? Councilmember Wei?
Yes, I do have a question. So basically this ordinance that we are doing is, um, I, I'm not going into details of how many below market, how many is to, is to step by step, increase the percentage of affordable housing to the, uh, housing bonus up to 40%, right? It is, is, to me, it's just, it's just like a table that the developer have to follow. It doesn't offer any other incentives or other, um, terms for the developer to do more or less. It's just, we're just offering a table that's so the developer can go with it. Is that basically what this ordinance is?
Yeah, that's essentially what it is. Um, yeah.
So my, my second question is, I think we receive a lot of emails from, uh, from residents who are concerned um, that we might be, we might get letters from the HCD because, uh, we're not incentivized, incentivized, uh, more affordable housing, uh, by this ordinance. What is our attorney's, uh, opinions on this?
Uh, well, a number of people provided to you the notice of violation that the city of Encinitas received.
Yes, that's what I'm worried about, yes.
Um, you know, there's a couple of differences between what the, what you are doing and what Encinitas did. Uh, I, I should, uh, I, I, I should disclose that Encinitas is one of our clients. So I, I'm only going to tell you things that are in the public record. Um, Enci- the Encinitas' ordinance, um, it was a, uh, it was a quite a comprehensive ordinance that had a number of changes. Um, HCD viewed that the change, that the city was, the ordinance that was adopted required additional justification for incentives and waivers. And HCD's view was that those requirements, uh, would disincentive applicants applying for incentives and waivers. The ordinance also reduced, changed the city's pop, the city's policy about how density was, uh, how the maximum density was, uh, calculated that would have reduced the maximum density on some sites. And so HCD's letter basically felt that whatever incentives were being offered through, uh, their program were offset by disincentive, disincentives in other parts of the ordinance. Your ordinance doesn't have any disincentives. Um, also, uh, also the city did contract with an economic consultant to see if the program would in fact incentivize affordable housing. And what the, what the consultant, uh, concluded is really, uh, is really borne out by what we see. And that is that the increases that are valuable to the developer are increases related to very low income housing, rather than to increases in the, uh, in bonuses related to low income housing. And that is because the rents that can be charged for low income housing are not very much higher than the rents that can be charged for very low income housing. But the proportion of very low income units that need to be provided to get it, to get a certain density, uh, is much lower than the proportion of low income units that need to be provided, if that makes sense. Um, and so, and, and just, just one other thing I wanted to add. I saw in a letter that you apparently just got, uh, one other change in state law that you're, that you would not follow is that, uh, they increased, they decreased the required percentage of affordable low income units to get 2 or 3 incentives. But the difficulty is that constructing lower income unit, low income units, as opposed to very low income unit, just is not really feasible. And so almost all the projects you see, the density bonus is gained by providing very low income units rather than low income units.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we're depleted of all my time. Uh, Vice.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. We, we did go a little bit over that as well. But Vice Mayor Chow, did you have any questions before I open it up to public comment? No, okay. I see your hand raised. So Vice Mayor Chow. And, uh, yeah.
Okay, so a question. Um, so if a development is 100% affordable, affordable housing, what's the, the percentage of, uh, low in, below market rate they, uh, the current state law allows?
Uh, every, any 100% affordable housing project is entitled to an 80% density bonus. If the project is within, uh, a half a mile of a major transit stop, then, uh, and that's measured as the crow flies. It doesn't matter whether people can actually walk there in half a mile. If it's within one half mile of a major transit stop, it's entitled to unlimited density and at least a three-story increase in height.
Okay. And then under density bonus law, wouldn't they be able to get waivers too on top of the?
Uh, for a project with 80%, for both projects, they can get four concessions, which is more than any other project is entitled to. Uh, the, the, a project with an 80% density increase can get an unlimited number of waivers. A project with, uh, unlimited density is not entitled to waivers unless the city chooses to provide them. That's because the project is already entitled to four concessions and three additional stories.
So the current program we, uh, we are adopting here, um, we, the project will follow the same density bonus program as any other. So the number of concession waiver will be all the same. We are just allowing, um, higher percentage of, um, extra density bonus units.
Correct. Um, I think as the city attorney said, there's a bigger program to redo your density bonus ordinance. Because the state law changes every year, it seems, on density bonus. I believe there have been about 30 uh, bills that have changed density bonus law. And so the city's ordinance is somewhat out of date. And so in most, uh, provisions, such as the, uh, provisions applicable to 100% affordable housing, the city applies state law.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, that is the, um, remainder of the time. I will go on to the public. We have four hands raised. And, um, I'll, I'll repeat, uh, the practice this year. Uh, you'll need to have your hand raised before the end of the first comment to be called upon. And, uh, our first three speakers are Neil Park McClintock, Sean Hughes and Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Neil.
Hi, uh, good night, everyone. Uh, I wanted to start off just by, um, acknowledging all the people who couldn't be here for such an important change. It's 10:30 at night. And I also want to thank the mayor, who I, from what I've seen, has made a really intentional effort to reduce these meeting times. But I think still, um, some of these questions maybe could have been asked in advance. Um, because it's impossible to expect people to be here at 10:30 at night on a weekday. Um, uh, but besides that, I just wanted to say that the law AB 2345, um, which is what this ordinance is ultimately based on, uh, in provide, in trying to get that carve out from the law. Um, I actually think in some ways it is very similar to the Encinitas ordinance. Um, in that the city hasn't demonstrably shown that this would actually increase affordability compared to 2345. What is guaranteed is that the overall net number of units will go down. Um, to someone like me, that's a bad thing. I'm sure to some of you, that is a good thing. Um, but I do want to also mention that the demonization of market rate housing is very strange in such an affluent city. Most of you live in market rate housing. You bought your home market rate. You didn't get a discount. It wasn't subsidized. So market rate housing is an essential part of living for many people. Uh, new market rate housing always costs a lot more, but this for sure will decrease the number of net units compared to the state law that took effect on January, in January 2021. Um, and so if your goal is to make sure that buildings are small, And so if your goal is to make sure that buildings are small and that there are fewer homes, this is the way to do that. If you would rather just follow state law and get virtually the same number of affordable units, but more units overall, then it would make a lot more sense to just go with state law. And I think former Mayor Scharf said it best. I'm going to go ahead and quote him from one of the meetings. He asked, is it worth it to let them have ten more market rate units to get those two extra very low income units? Yes, that is the answer. It is worth it. Because ultimately, you are housing ten people who would live in market rate housing, just like you do. And then you'd be including two extra people who would ultimately live in very low income housing. So I just don't see the point of this ordinance when the state law essentially addressed this already. It seems like an intentional effort to get around the law because there isn't evidence in the packet that it would actually increase affordability compared to the state law. But that is all for my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Our next speaker is Sean Hughes. And I will cut off. There are, there are seven remaining speakers. And I'll, I'll read off the names. Jennifer Griffin, Amy Jasper, J.R. Fruen, Connie Cunningham, Stephen Scharf, and Lisa Warren. Welcome, Sean.
Hey, how's, how are you doing? Thank you for the time. My name is Sean Hughes. I grew up in Cupertino, near Jolene Park. I'm just calling in to voice my opposition to the proposed changes to the density bonus ordinance here. The proposed code amendment clearly, clearly seeks to undercut the fifty percent bonus outlined in AB two, three, four, five and creates undue transaction costs with a separate program, exposes the city to unwanted state attention, and reinforces the perception of a development hostile environment Cupertino is infamous for, not just statewide, but frankly, like among urban planning circles nationwide. Moreover, my understanding is that this proposed change went through a semi-flawed process. My understanding could be wrong, but my understanding is that there was not sufficient public comment among the initial submission and no planning commission review. And therefore, I feel like this change fails both on its merits and procedurally. And I really strongly urge the council to reconsider these changes. If I may comment further, the, the entire intention of this proposal is somewhat confusing to me. If Cupertino is truly committed to sustainability, it would recognize the need for more transit-oriented development, not less. Greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector are both the largest proportion of California's emissions. And unlike other sectors, like in the industrial, we can tangibly influence these by creating an environment more friendly to high-density environment development. PPAs like Wiley, Mr. Wiley cited earlier are nice. But reductions to the transportation sector are much, much more crucial to our future. And there's no clearly stated reasoning, at least within the supporting documents that I could review prior to this, as to why the proposed reduction here is preferable to the current state law's density bonus requirements. Furthermore, as indicated to other people's comments around the city of Encinitas and the HCD agency actions in response to some of their updates there, I think simply put, I think that this proposed decrease may invite unwarranted state scrutiny. Thank you to Barbara and other commentators too, to providing information that I wasn't aware of earlier. But still, I think for something in absence of a valid reason to why this plan is preferable to AB twenty-three, forty-five, in adopting these changes, this seems like an unnecessary risk. And, and lastly, I think, just to close, I mean, one day, honestly, I would love for the city to actually be seen to be fighting for a more inclusive and sustainable future. And frankly, growing up here, I feel like I've never seen that. And I feel like this proposal reflects a lack of ambition and strongly urges the council to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Our next speaker is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Darcy. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I'm, you know, I will tell, I'll begin right now that I remember when AB two, three, forty-five by Ms. Gonzalez was passed last summer. It was one of the last things that scraped through the legislature. This was an insidious bill then, and it's getting worse now. The secret charities, the clandestine charities are funding all of these bills. A lot of people as voters in California are being suppressed and bypassed because we have had zero say, zero input by the shadow government that is taking over Sacramento. Yes, I am fully supporting Cupertino to do as they fit best, see best, because HCD, RENA, and A-BAG have zero, zero credibility. They are being funded by secret charities who want to take over the state. And I think that at this point, the cities have to do everything possible to retain local control because the goal is local control and the cities. They do not want the residents and the cities to have any say in what happens in this state. I, we had a threat to our federal government in January. Don't forget that. This is a threat to our state government. Don't forget that. Yes, Cupertino has every right to do what they see is fit against the onslaught of these secretly funded, secret bills that are trying to take over the state. Yes, it's no fun. We did COVID with the high-density housing bills and then trying to take care of our families. That is no fun. But believe me, democracy works not, not in silence. It works in full public. And we are exercising our democratic ability by retaining local control in our state. I see these housing bills as a threat to any democracy in California. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Amy Jasper. Welcome, Amy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. I want to let you know that I have an adult son with disabilities on SSI and his income is like nine hundred a month, which is very low income. And I feel that this proposal does not really address affordable housing in your city, in this city because it's not enough. Fifteen units out of a hundred for low-income families is not enough. You are losing families who cannot afford to live in Cupertino. Therefore, you're losing children in your public schools. And then the public schools are, are threatening to be closed because of lack of children. So I think you just need to do more to provide more affordable housing for people that, you know, are not working at Apple or Google or whatever, you know, just normal people. So that's just my say about the situation. I'm, I think you're trying, but it's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Our next speaker is J.R. Fruen. Welcome, J.R.
Good evening, members of the city council. I have sent you a rather lengthy letter already, so I'm not going to rehash the entire thing. But I would encourage you all to read it and digest it before you make a decision tonight. One of the things, and I will thank Barb for her, her comments earlier, but one of the things that she did not cover in great detail is the fact that one of the independent grounds that HCD had for issuing the notice of violation involved the fact that Encinitas ordinance simply by itself, in only allowing and permitting additional units, did not do anything to further incentivize any type of additional housing. And HCD went on to describe exactly what it thinks incentivizing is. It is something that boosts and encourages incites or goods or similar. It's more than simply allowing or permitting or failing to restrain or prevent. That's significant. The ordinance in front of you, rather than simply encouraging, inciting, goading, or something like that in order to create additional housing, uses the force of law to require additional affordable housing as part of the ability to access additional density bonus units. That is an added cost. And added cost is one of the additional reasons that HCD found Encinitas to be in violation. So I would encourage you to go back. I have sent you both of the letters that HCD sent to Encinitas. I've sent you my thoughts on it and potentially retool this. See if there's a way that you can come up with, for example, additional incentives and parking reductions, et cetera, that might actually allow you to, to come up with a regime of your own if you're genuinely worried about value capture and making sure that we get the largest number of affordable housing units in return for new density bonus units. Thank you very much.
Thank you, J.R. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Okay, thank you for unmuting me. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I am on the Housing Commission, but speaking for myself only. I'm very concerned for the city's proposed zoning reforms because it creates a maximum density bonus of only forty percent, as opposed to the state at fifty percent for the AB two, thirty-five, two, three, four, five. Our city has a big need for affordable housing and hasn't built any since the two thousand nineteen opening of the veranda. This particular ordinance would lower the net density and number of units at a time when we really need to focus on developments along our major corridors so that we reduce our sprawl. And also, as a, a previous speaker talked about, our reliance on, on driving and the environmental impacts. This particular ordinance reduces the required percent of inclusionary affordable housing units from fifteen to thirteen percent. That does not seem to be going in the right direction to try to incentivize more building of, of affordable units. And my last point would be that Cupertino will have its own set of rules that make everything even more complicated because it's different from what the rest of the state is doing. We've already received almost no applications for building houses in our city, which indicates that there's something that needs to be fixed, rather than further scrunch down as far as incentives to have developers build here. And I hadn't thought through that. There was this one person that was talking about you need to have affordable, I mean, market rate units too. Yeah, we need every kind of housing. We're very much flat in the course of building and yet, excuse me, the number of people is growing. As we look forward to planning, I think this, the state has in fact provided a lot of opportunity for cities to take their, their own future in hand and come up with their own ideas, how they want to create new housing. I don't think that they're trying to be autocratic. They've worked hard to get us to think this through on our own. And I hope tonight that you will do that and change this ordinance in that direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks. So in the planning commission meeting that considered this issue, as another speaker pointed out, I had asked why we wouldn't just go to fifty percent in order to get the larger number of affordable units, which is our pressing need. But as H.L. Mencken stated, for every complex problem, there's an answer that is clear, simple, and wrong. While it's counterintuitive that a fifty percent density bonus with a higher percentage requirement for affordable units would actually result in fewer affordable units, the staff report explains clearly why this is the case. AB twenty-three, forty-five could disincentivize the production of affordable housing and going with that fifty percent would decrease the net number of affordable units, not increase them. Today, I also looked at Berkeley's Turner Center's analysis of AB twenty-three, forty-five. This is a housing think tank, and they concluded that the proposed density increases in twenty-three, forty-five would not improve the financial feasibility compared to what is currently allowed in existing law, let alone our forty percent. And it actually makes the financial feasibility slightly worse in terms of very low income units. So finally, I hope that no one believes that these changes, either the forty percent under our proposed ordinance or the fifty percent under twenty-three, forty-five, is necessarily going to get any of the four approved but unbuilt housing element projects in our current arena to move forward. The current situation with housing demand for market rate and lease rates for market rate, which subsidize the affordable housing, those are the reasons why those projects have not pulled permits, even though they have been approved. In some cases, they've been approved for years. And the city has just been waiting for these property owners to pull permits and move forward. And I think we're all aware that we've far exceeded our current arena requirements in terms of approval of projects, more than three times our one thousand sixty-four requirement. But, you know, as everyone knows, we cannot force a developer to pull permits and build. We don't have any power to do that. So I hope you go forward with the forty percent, and I hope that everyone understands that the fifty percent would actually not get you additional affordable units. It would actually get you less. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. Our next and final speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Stephen just gave a lot of reasons that I agree with. And I just want to thank, well, my takes also that additional market rate units do not increase affordability. And I'm glad, very glad this was discussed and worked out. And I want to thank council and staff for doing the research behind the change, and I do support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. And I'll now bring this back to council. Would anyone like to bring forward a motion for the purposes of further discussion? I see no hands raised. Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah, so, let me find. So I'll, I move to that or, first reading, I move to adopt resolution, sorry, wrong one. I move to adopt ordinance number twenty dash two, 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 seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending city code chapter ten ninety of title ten. Two point, oh, wait, this is, so sorry.
We're on, we're on item number ten.
Yeah, number ten. So I moved that the ordinance to, to adopt. I move to conduct the first reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash two, 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 six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending Cupertino municipal code section nineteen point fifty-six point three, zero, three, zero, eight, tape and nineteen point fifty-six point zero, three, zero, F, to incentivize the development of affordable housing by allowing for density bonuses of up to forty percent, which includes a finding that the adoption of the ordinance is exempt from CQAP. And I move that the ordinance be, this is first reading, okay. And I also.
Would anyone like to, would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
Just a minute. I also would like the council to give a direction to staff to come back with potential future program considering fifty percent density bonus in either the upcoming density bonus ordinance or the housing element.
Okay. Would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
Mayor, if I could clarify the motion, that the ordinance would be read by title only and would constitute the first reading thereof.
Right. So, so Heather, what I've been doing is taking the motion, and then once we put it on the table, before we vote on it, I, I ask that the. before we vote on it, I ask that the city clerk read it by title only. So clarification is taken under good consideration and will be addressed in due order. So would anyone like to second Vice Mayor Chow's motion?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Sorry, Councilmember Willie seconds. All right, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to the motion?
For deliberation?
Yes, as part of deliberation.
Okay, yes. You know, I really hesitate, well, if you can be putting up the example that she had, I think that will help me, but a little bit of a narrative there. You know, I really hesitate in putting the motion forward and even seconding it after hearing, you know, community input prior to our deliberation so that the community can understand the reasoning behind us then moving forward with the motion. And my concern, you know, 40% bonus, 50% bonus, with such a small benefit to the community, but such a big benefit to the developer. The developer getting 40 more units with only a few, an additional two or three units that are in the affordable category. So that being a real sticking point for me. So now, why do I think this is such a sticking point? Let's look at Westport. Westport was zoned for 237 units, of which has to have the 15% BMR unit. And the developer then said, well, I'm going to go ahead and get an additional, give an additional five units, making it to 242, but I want these concessions and waivers to double the height of my project. By us on the City Council, this is my view, and a developer might want to dispute it. But by his requesting meeting and we, at least me, taking an issue with, wait a minute, you want to double the height of the building and you're only giving the community five below-market-rate units? The end result was the developer then increased the number of below-market-rate units or senior units to include an additional 20 units. He took it to 265 units and making those senior units and below-market units. So I want the 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 community that sits there and thinks that somehow we're shortchanging the system. That's not the case. We want fair and equitable for the community at large. And when a developer wants huge increases in his profit potential for minimized benefits to the community in terms of affordability, that doesn't, it doesn't help. As our last couple of speakers spoke to, those numbers are really not getting any more affordable units. If a developer comes to Cupertino City Council and says, I want the, I would like you to consider 150 units on that 100-unit thing, get the 50%, and I'm willing to give you an addition, 50% of those added units, 50% of those added units will be affordable units. Wow, we'd be all ears. If it's a good, good project for the community, then they're going to get our support. But when it's so lopsided. And so I hope, I hope the the people that did speak about, well, it's not enough and you're shortchanging, I hope they understand we're here for the community and to make sure that we utilize the community's assets, the property, the assets, for the the best project for the community to get as much for the community as we can. And unfortunately, that takes a lot more of our time than to just stamp whatever the developers bring us. So I'll leave it at that. I seconded the motion because I believe the developers can still come to us with with higher densities, but they gotta be bringing more affordable units to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Actually, I have a question on the motion. I did not get what Vice Mayor Chow added on the, at the end. Then I have a comment to make. Can we clarify what is the motion?
I'd like council's direction to bring back a future program that would consider 50% density bonus, that would allow 50% density bonus, maybe with a higher percentage of below-market-rate housing. And that would be, we can consider that as part of the density bonus update that the staff is already working on. Or we could consider it as part of the housing element if it needs CEQA.
So is it a separate, I mean, so it has to go together? A little confused. Okay.
Separate. So it will be another program besides what we are approving today.
So I was thinking maybe we should separate, but I'll let-
And I think the thinking is we cannot make changes for today's ordinance.
Okay, so, okay, I'll leave that, so I'll leave that to, for Mayor Paul to decide. Okay, so my, my concern is, I'm all good with this density bonus ordinance, up to 40%. But I think part, a major part of our job as City Council is to protect our city from lawsuits. So I am uncomfortable to vote for it today without knowing the consequences of what HCD might or very likely will send as a letters of violation. So I did read the two letters violation that they sent it to the City of Encinitas. And I, you know, I have limited legal interpretation, but what I got is incentivized. I mean, they, they, they stick to this that if the ordinance does not have incentivized, incentives for builders to build more affordable housing, even if we have charts, we have, you know, we have levels that you can do. I, I think very likely we will get into our city in lawsuits. So I am very uncomfortable voting for this because of that. I would like to have more analysis on the HCD's letters with the City of Encinitas. Are we going to make, get ourselves into, get our city into lawsuits, spend unnecessary money on attorney's fees by voting on this? I have no problem voting on this. My concern is, our job is to protect our city from lawsuits. So I really would like to more analysis from our attorney's office to, you know, what, how likely we're going to get a violation? How likely we're going to get the DA to get our case and then, you know, sue us? So it's not the ordinance that I have issue with, it's the law. I don't like, you know, land laws or, you know, laws from Sacramento as anybody else. We want local control. But laws are laws. We gotta follow them. We gotta protect our city from lawsuits. So that is my hesitance.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay, so and I think maybe many members of the public doesn't know, Cupertino has our own inclusive ordinance for below-market rate, and that's 15%. So that means any project proposed today with or without density bonus unit, they are required to provide 15% of below-market rate housing. We have that today. And AB 2345 would allow 50% of density bonus with only 15% of BMR housing. So basically, we, it's incentivizing. It removes the incentive to provide below-market rate housing. So this kind of program doesn't work in Cupertino. Therefore, we, our, the proposed one strengthens it. And also, I think, I hope that we can clarify, the letter of violation from HCD does not, is not equivalent to lawsuit. HCD issues letters, many letters of violation to cities. They have a website with many, many of these letters. And they rarely will sue a city. And that's very different. And I think we, we have a very strong case that we, AB 2345, it might work in other cities, but not Cupertino. And it was proposed because in San Diego, they, their density bonus law was not utilized for projects over there. But in Cupertino, we identified the five housing element sites. And all five housing element sites already have proposed projects and approved project. And they all utilized the density bonus ordinance to create more units. So it's working, it's a program that's working well in Cupertino to provide more below-market rate housing. And whether the applicant is able to build due to market condition is not something we can control. But we have been utilizing the ordinance well. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Mayor Paul, how much time do I have?
We'll put you on three minutes. Try to be succinct.
Okay. So I just want to talk about some of the projects that we, that we have approved. Hampton's has seven low-income units, 30 moderate units, 563 market rate units, total of 600. Only seven low-income units. Marina had 16 very low, two moderate, 170 market rate, total of 188. Valco, it's, it sounds like it might be questionable if these numbers are correct, but I believe it's 361 very low income and 840 low-income units. Those are studio and one bedrooms. The studios are about 388 square feet. The one bedrooms are about 528 square feet. And your market rate units go up to five bedrooms and 4,600 square feet. So I think there is, perhaps, the use of the density bonus law has almost a kind of a pattern of discrimination. When we go and look at the Westport project, the most recent one, they actually qualified for a 35% density bonus. They could have had an additional 53 market rate units. They left those on the table and did not include those in the project. When they planned for the townhouses and row houses, those have three bedrooms in them, and there was no dispersal requirement that those three-bedroom units, which would have accommodated families, would have any affordable for-sale units built. And so again, so Valco doesn't appear to be providing for families with more than one child. And when we look at Westport, affordable units. And then when we look at Westport, we have the same scenario. You know, the senior units are great. It's super. However, there was this qualification for the, for BMR dispersal, which didn't happen. So I think there, there's, the developers are coming to us and saying these projects are penciling out, but there's actually items that we are allowing them to not provide. And specifically, when we're talking about having more children in the schools, we need to provide this housing at all, all the income levels, which will accommodate the children going to our schools. We have great, we have great schools, and I really hope, moving forward, that we, there is a way that we can ensure that those affordable units, which can accommodate families, will actually get built here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. I do see that Councilmember Wei has her hand up. And so did you want a follow-up point?
Yeah, do I have one more minute? I have a question to ask. As I said, I have no problem with this, you know, bone, bone density bonus. And I know density bonus, some of that doesn't work. But what I wanted to emphasize is, we don't want to get into lawsuits. So is it true that HCD never sues? Or can they enforce us to, you know, reverse this ordinance if they have? What is the procedure if, when HCD gave a city a letter of violation? Do they just drop it or do?
HCD, HCD has referred cases to the Attorney General. I think the only lawsuit that resulted, though, is a lawsuit against Huntington Beach, which had upzoned properties to, Huntington Beach had upzoned properties in accordance with this housing element and then downzoned those properties. And at that, and sometime later, HCD sued them. But HCD, so, so that's the only lawsuit that, lawsuit that has resulted. But in terms of the procedure, if HCD threatens to sue a city on its housing element because abuse, its housing element is inadequate, it's required to have two meetings with the Attorney General and HCD to see if things can be resolved. But in terms of issues of density bonus or some of the other state laws, HCD can notify the Attorney General. The Attorney General can then file suit against the city without, without having any kind of meet and confer process. So they are, you know, so they can, so HCD can sue a city if it wants, or the Attorney General, rather, and file suit on behalf of HCD.
Barb, could you clarify if usually a notice of violation asking the city to rescind its action would occur before that point, which would give the city another opportunity to consider the item?
Right. As in Encinitas, I think HCD would send you a notice of violation.
Yeah, I think I, I saw the HCD site with these letters. There are sometimes back and forth, violation, city respond, and then they might have another. So there is kind of communication. They don't just jump right ahead or we'll sue you. They actually work with the city. And here you are violating, and the city could respond, right?
Yeah, it depends. I meant, as was said in the staff reports to Encinitas, Encinitas did request to meet with HCD, and HCD did not respond and instead simply sent a notice of violation.
Sorry, Mayor, do I have one more minute or am I timed out?
Well-
Just one more question.
Did you have a quick comment that you wanted to make?
Yes, I was, I would just say if we don't vote it right now and then do a little bit more research, I would like to get some more answers. Is that possible? I mean, can you get more answers on what happened to Encinita? And what would happen if we, and if the FCD does, you know, send us a violation? And I'm just really concerned. I think my job, you know, as 11-year school board, my, one of my priorities is to protect my agency, not-
Obviously, we could, we, you know, in conjunction with the city attorney, we could draft a more detailed legal memo for the council to consider in closed session if that was the council's desire. I think, as the city attorney also said, though, you would get some kind of communication from HCD before it would file suit. Just look up if they had a requirement to do so, but anyway.
Okay, let me bring this meeting back. And, you know, before we get too far out of order, I just remind everyone to try to speak through, through, through me as chair and mayor. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this point. So what I will ask is for our city manager to conduct the first reading of this ordinance.
I love the promotion, but I think-
Oh, I'm sorry, the city, city clerk.
Okay, so this is the first reading of ordinance number 21-2226, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 19.56.03A, Table 19.56.030, and 19.56.030F, Density Bonus Ordinance to Incentivize the Development of Affordable Housing by Allowing for Density Bonus of Up to 40%, which includes a finding that adoption of the ordinance is exempt from California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, thank you. There is an omnibus motion on the table from Vice Mayor- There is an omnibus motion on the table from Vice Mayor Chow. And that was seconded by Councilmember Willie. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on that motion?
Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Nay. As I said, I'm not comfortable voting for now.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries with Wei voting no.
Okay, we are at eleven fifteen now. I, I think we probably will be able to get through, uh, if we're assiduous about this item, item thirteen, uh, the field use policy. Does anyone need a break at this point? I'll just go by, by hand, okay? So let's, um, let's reconvene at eleven-twenty. All right, thanks. Items eleven and twelve, uh, as at the beginning of the meeting, were, uh, continued until May fourth. And so we are at ordinances and action items. Item thirteen, the subject is consider approving the updated athletic field use policy. And I see our Director of Public Works is here, as well as, uh, our Assistant to the City Manager. Uh, so, um, would one of you like to kick us off with regard to, and, and our city managers back as well, uh, with regard to the, uh, the item here?
Sure, I'd be happy to introduce it. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Joanne Magrini, Director of Parks and Recreation. And this evening, um, in front of you is considering approving the updated Athletic Field Use Policy. And Jenny Coverman, our Recreation Supervisor, is here to provide, um, a presentation on the item.
Thanks, Joanne. I'm going to share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Jenny Coverman, Recreation Supervisor, and I'm here to present our updated Athletic Field Use Policy. The current Athletic Field Use Policy was approved by council in two thousand and four and went into effect in January of two thousand and five. The policy became a city work program item in fiscal year nineteen twenty. The need to evaluate how we schedule fields is also addressed in our Parks and Recreation System Master Plan. The updated policy was reviewed at the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting two weeks ago. The main updates to the current policy relate to additional Sunday use, the switch to an hourly fee structure, and discussion regarding potential field closures. Additional updates were made to incorporate existing guidelines and practices, including simplifying the group prioritization for efficiency purposes. But this still remains largely consistent with the current practice. Our field study did include community outreach. This included a dedicated webpage, postcards mailed to all city residents, and the use of social media to encourage participation in the online survey that ran from February seventeenth to March twenty-first. We held an online community meeting on March ninth, and sta- staff met with all of the youth sports organizations that currently use our fields to gather feedback. As I mentioned, part of our outreach included meetings with the youth sports organizations. This chart reflects their feedback regarding Sunday use. Please note that Sundays are only available to current regular weekday users, and this would not change under the new policy. The groups listed on the left are our regular groups. And as you can see, the chart is divided into resident groups, non-resident, and groups serving indivi- and those serving individuals with disabilities. Groups are currently allowed two Sundays for tournaments per year. As you can see in the first column, groups are not using all of the Sundays available under the current policy. And those serving individuals with a disability request limited use. Looking to the right on the chart, while some groups are interested in all Sundays, most are looking for a few days for makeup games or games. Groups, groups that serve, groups that serve those with disabilities are allowed to play on Sundays under the current policy. And that would not change under the new policy. As I mentioned, there was a community survey from February seventeenth to March twenty-first. There were nine hundred and seventy-nine total respondents. Respondents self-identified in the following categories. Please note that respondents could have identified in more than one category. Five hundred and eighty-one residents, three hundred and ninety-seven with someone in their home who plays youth sports on one of our fields, and four hundred and fifteen that live next to one of our fields. Our first question was regarding support for allowing additional Sunday use. The majority of residents and those living next to fields are not in favor of additional Sundays, while the youth sports groups are in favor. We also asked if Sunday use was expanded. Given these choices, which would they prefer? Residents and those living next to fields were overwhelmingly in favor of allowing only four additional Sundays, while youth sports groups were in favor of all Sundays. The next question was regarding the times play would be allowed if Sunday use was expanded. Residents and those that live next to fields preferred the shorter time of ten AM to two PM, allowing use by the public on either side of permits, while the youth sports groups were in favor of the all-day timeframe of ten AM to five PM. Our final question was if there were to be an annual field closure, what would the preference, what would be the preference for the length of closure? All groups were in favor of a one-month closure. So our first area of focus is additional Sunday use. A review of nine neighboring cities found that all allowed permitted use on all Sundays. Our current policy allows that two Sunday permit dates per year per organization may be granted by staff for tournaments or events, but not regularly scheduled league play. Sunday play is allowed for those groups serving individuals with disabilities. Our limit on Sundays allows us to rest the fields and provide a time for residents to use them. Youth sports groups have attended prior council meetings to advocate for additional Sunday use. This expanded use would allow them to schedule games, makeup games, and practices. And for those groups who don't hold tournaments, it would provide them an opportunity to have games. Taking into consideration the resident and youth sports organization preferences, Commission wanted to support the recreational use of fields by residents and families, as well as acknowledge the benefit additional opportunities could provide to youth sports groups. They recommended two additional Sundays per year from ten AM to two PM for games and practices. This is in addition to what is currently allowed for Sundays regarding tournaments and groups serving those with disabilities. This recommendation has minimal impact on our twenty-seven fields with only nine organizations currently using them. Our next focus was the hourly fee structure. To better align with our neighboring sitter, cities, improve efficiency and cost recovery, it is recommended that Cupertino shift from the current per-player fee structure to an hourly fee structure. It's an estimated one point eight million dollars annually to maintain and operate our fields. The current per-player structure results in about a seven percent cost recovery. Commission considered the estimated twenty-five percent and forty percent cost recovery options that were presented. While forty percent, forty percent cost recovery is often used in Parks and Recreation fees, twenty-five percent was included to ease the burden of the increase. Due to the significant increase from current rates, the Commission recommended a phased approach for the youth resident groups, beginning at ten dollars an hour per field, with all other categories starting at twenty-five percent cost recovery levels. They also suggested a five-dollar increase per year until the twenty-five percent cost recovery is reached. This chart reflects the options for field use fees. It includes the proposed fee categories. And you can see in bold font the Commission's recommendation as it compares to neighboring cities and the twenty-five and forty percent cost recovery options. You can see that the Commission's recommendation is the same as the twenty-five percent cost recovery option, except for youth resident groups. This chart reflects the ex- estimated impact that the fee increase would have on our sports groups. The first column is the fees that were paid by each group in fiscal year eighteen nineteen under the current per-player structure. The other three columns reflect an estimate of their fees and an hourly structure. The information in these three columns is based on feedback from the groups on the hours they think that they actually use our fields. Our final area of focus is the annual field closure. Except for Santa Clara and San Jose, the other cities reviewed do close their fields during the winter for two to three months. Cupertino's need for an annual rest period will depend on usage under the new policy. Due to the feedback from residents and youth sports group, it is recommended that fields be closed only as needed. So I know this was a lot of information, so I'd like to just recap what the Commission's recommendation, um, was. With one Commissioner absent, they unanimously recommended that City Council adopt the updated Athletic Field Use Policy with the following components. Expand Sundays to two additional Sundays per year from ten AM to two PM for games and practices. An hourly fee structure, starting resident youth sports groups at ten dollars an hour, and all others at twenty-five percent cost recovery. Scheduled field closures as needed. That concludes my presentation. The recommended action for council is to approve the updated field use policy and provide any input. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Jenny. Are there any questions of staff for the presentation from council? And given our limited time, I'm going to put us on a, 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 on a strict two-minute limit. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Uh, I think that's too short. So I have a question about Attachment D, the fee comparison chart. Uh, this doesn't appear to be per hour. It looks like it's per player. Uh, and, uh, when I did a rough calculation of, uh, my son's teams, um, when they were playing, so say you had a, say you had a roster that was eighteen, perhaps. You might even have a roster that's as big as twenty-six. Let's say you've got a fifty percent spread of resident and non-resident there. Currently, you would have, um, twenty-two dollars per year for the residents and a hundred and seventy-six dollars per year for the non-residents on that team. And you can multiply that out by the, the size of the roster. If they practice three times a week for an hour and a half, and then on Saturday, they're going to practice, or they'll have a game, um, on, on a Saturday. Uh, so that's another, um, gosh, it's more than an hour and a half. It's like two hours, uh, field time. So you add up all that time, so an hour and a half, three hours, four hours, five hours, six, what am I at? Six and a half hours a week? I think so. Um, so it just seems that it, it, there's a possibility if they're, if they're playing their games somewhere else, not in Cupertino, that, that you're, they're actually getting, uh, a discount with this new program, um, changing to your hourly rate. So I'm concerned about that. So I actually think this needs to come back after, after more study. Uh, it looks like you're going to let a school like Hyde no longer have a fee. I'd like to have that clarified, um, that the schools which have the joint use agreement. So Hyde, uh, we always played games there. There's games still happening now. There's also private training.
There's twenty seconds left. You might want to leave some time to answer your questions.
Uh, okay, there you go. That's why I think it's too short. This is a huge issue.
Okay, now you have ten seconds left.
So I can speak to some of those questions?
Okay.
Oh, you have my time.
All right, very good. Uh, please.
So the Attachment D is hourly. It's the hourly fees. Um, maybe I'm not understanding the question correctly. And, but, and then your other question regarding Hyde, we're not, um, exempting Hyde from being part of this fee structure. I think maybe you're looking at, if the school wants to use their own field, they would not pay a fee. But other organizations would still need to pay a fee.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei.
I just have two, uh, recommendations or edits or suggestions. Uh, the non-resident adults and for-profit use organizations, I think we should charge them comparable rate as our neighborhoods, because they're not our residents, they're for, for profit. And if we are much lower than our neighboring cities, they very likely would like to play on our fields. And we use our residents' tax money, and I think we should be compatible on that category. The rest of the category, I'm okay with it. And also, um, I understand the Sunday, adding the Sunday for four hours, ten to two, because the residents don't like it. But my kids used to play tournaments too. Four hours is not enough for a four tournament. So I'm thinking if we can, it's only two Sundays, uh, a year, added two Sundays a year. And if we want to allow tournaments on those Sundays, um, I would propose we allow ten AM to four PM. Not quite to five, but six hours would be good for a league to have a nice tournament, um, on the Sunday day. So that would be my two, uh, recommendations to, uh, add to the, to change to this ordinance.
To just add clarification to the tournament piece, the tournaments, we are not proposing to change, and those are still a full-day tournament that they're allowed.
Oh, okay, so it's only the two days added?
The two extra fields, yeah.
Okay, so then they won't be able to do a tournament if they have, have a six-hour?
No, they're restricted to just games or practice on those two days.
I'm proposing that just relaxes so that they can either practice or do a six-hour tournament. And they might not use the whole six hours to just practice because of hourly fee. Really, is, I like the hourly fee because it incentivizes them to limit their time. I mean, they don't need to use the six hours. They probably just book three hours or big book two hours. And so I, I would like to suggest that we allow that two extra Sundays to possibly be a tournament.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Our next questions are from. Our next questions are from Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, can we go to the survey question number one? That one kind of buzzed through so fast, where it was, I heard you saying that, you know, the residents are concerned about that, but I wasn't quite seeing that on the survey question number one. There, okay, go back up. Survey question number one.
I think that's right.
Well, maybe that was it. Okay, there you go, yeah. And so you're saying the residents were not in favor. Now, the residents, dark blue, 60.9, so currently you, so I'm not quite in understanding that. Do you support, and I'm seeing 69.93 for dark blue, so that seemed like they do support.
If you look at the bottom of the chart, that is no.
Oh, that's no.
The answers for no, yeah. And then the youth sports group in the maroon is over the yes.
Okay. Wow, okay, yeah, so that's probably why I wanted to see that, because I was thinking the opposite. So if there is the concern, they're keeping it to a minimum timeframe. I guess where I'm kind of coming from is I think our community really does want to get the maximum amount of benefit from, you know, community assets. You know, Memorial Park, all of our parks, joint school use. I can definitely understand, you know, residents directly adjacent to a field, but I think in general, you know, the overall community is going to want to be taking advantage of the facilities as much as possible. The non-resident ones, I think.
Councilmember Willie, that's time on you. But you did seem to be in comments regardless, so I'll cut you off there. I appreciate the tolerance from everyone here. When we bring it back, we'll go ahead and have a round of comments and questions as well. But let me bring it to the members of the public now. Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a chance to ask questions? I see your hand is up right now, but I don't recall if you.
I gave my time to Councilmember Moore.
Oh, you did, right, okay, so you have a minute and a half, all right, please.
Sure question, so right now, each team who regularly uses the field, they can have two tournament days, which are two full days. So with a new one, are we adding two more game days on top of the two tournament days? That would be 10 to 2.
Sure, so currently, teams do get, under the blanket policy, they get two Sundays per year for tournaments at as many sites as they would like. So what this policy would do is in addition to that, under the recommendation, let's say from Commission, of two more Sundays, those are per field. So if, so for example, Creekside Park is three fields. So if I said I'm going to use, I'd like to use one of my Sundays on, you know, May 2nd at Creekside Park, I would get one field from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I could use two fields, but now I've just used my two fields, my two Sundays for the entire year. Does that answer your question?
But the tournament is still, I mean, the current tournament is not just two times a year, it's two times for every.
For each site? For each group at as many sites as they would like for their tournament. So they might use two sites, or they might use five for their tournament.
Oh, so they could have five sites, each site for two tournament days.
Because for a tournament, they'll typically have multiple games going at once, right?
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you Councilmember Vice Mayor Rader Chow. And at this point, I'll bring it over to the public for comment. There are six hands raised, and again, I'll call on you if your hand is raised by the end of the first commentary. I won't cut down the three-minute time limit, but if you could be succinct about it, that would be much appreciated. Our next, our first speaker is Samir Jain, followed by Love Aron, followed by Roshan Kumar. Welcome, Samir.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear an echo as well, so you might, you might want to turn off either the volume or the mic on your other device.
Yeah. Hello?
Hello?
You're echoing for some reason. Better now? Okay.
Yeah, first of all, thank you for giving us a chance. Very nice to be with the council and very exciting topics. I like to comment on the use of the field that we have. As you can see during COVID times, children have been in house most of the time. And usually, we get on the Sundays where after I should use to take our kids out and play. So to give an example, like with sports like cricket, which requires about five to six hours to complete a game, that doesn't mean that all the games go for so long, but we definitely need time from 10:00 to 5:00, because we cannot finish the game early, like in two, three hours. So like four hours time limit from 10:00 to 2:00 doesn't help. And then the other thing is the pickup games that we have, it's not an organized game, it's a pickup game. So kids should be allowed to go, they are usually kids between 7:00 to 15:00, they have no other place to go and play. So if the pickup games are not put in this restriction, it's not an organized tournament, it's not by any sports organization, kids should have a place to go and play at. So that should be under consideration. The third thing is, we should allow Sundays, all Sundays to be available. It should not be that the children can go and play only on a particular day. It's a big restriction, because then they will have to think, okay, I can only go on a particular day and play, which doesn't seem to be nice for a young budding kid. The other thing is, the number of fields which are available. If you look at Cupertino, like the library field, we have only one field which is available in the whole city for the children to go and play. And it should be restricted for any adult usage as well, because most of the adults that comes over there then prevent the kids to go and play at the ground. So these are some of my suggestions, I don't want to go too long, I know it's pretty late in the night, but if you can consider all these requests from the kids' point of view and allow them to play on a Sunday without any restriction. And any organized games can be deterred, but any pickup game should be still allowed on all Sundays, that's my request, thank you.
Thank you, Samir. Our next speaker is Love Aron, and we have six total speakers, including Samir. Those are Roshan Kumar, Hamid Butch, Prabhu Kutiem, and Amy Jasper. Welcome, Love.
Hi Mayor, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk, and thank you everyone for putting this new proposal together. I like the Sunday proposal that you guys have. I also would like to add, there are basically zero tournaments happening. In Cupertino, we basically use it for games. As far as the hourly rate is concerned, we have to be very, and the new price structure that you have, I think it's going to be very expensive for a nonprofit youth sports like us. Nonprofit youth sports is dying in Cupertino. The big-name clubs are coming up, so we need to be careful of that. The other thing, hourly seems to be complicated to me. There might be pitfalls. How, for instance, how will we manage the overlap of two groups using the same field? There'll be a lot of spreadsheet required to go from here and there. The management of time will be hard. And then it may not be even. You know, like Councilmember Kitty Moore said, six and a half hours, it may not be even. There will be non-residents and residents. Currently, you charge A price for residents and B price for non-residents, which is quite even. So people who are using, they're paying the money. People who are not using are not paying the money. Roster sizes could be 50. If there's a roster size of 50 players opposed to 10 players, then you get money from 10 players as opposed to 50 players. Then more personal hours will be required from the city perspective and from our perspective as well. You will need more software systems and more things to do, adjust the billing for us. So that's all, I've used two minutes, I'll yield my time to the next speaker.
Thank you very much, Love. Our next speaker is Roshan Kumar, welcome, Roshan.
So thanks Mayor for giving me, giving me an opportunity to speak. I have two kids, eight and 12, both boys. And as you can imagine, they are very energetic and athletic. And when we went through the shelter-in-place last year, it was quite challenging for the first few months. And thanks to the county and city for letting us, for letting our kids play in the grounds. They have taken up cricket as their sport, and they look forward to playing games during weekends. And I request you to allow them to play on Sundays too, because cricket by nature, games are very long, sometimes they may be four to five hours long. So if one age group plays on Saturday, the other age group may want to play on Sunday. So if you can allow at least pickup games, as Samir said, and not organized games, it's just pickup games as kids show up, whoever is there, they can just play, and also maintain social distance and all the other requirements during the COVID situation. That will really help a lot. And our kids, they just look forward to the weekends, because that's the only time they can spend with other kids of their age. And also, these are the formative years, and we don't want them to lose the precious time. Thanks, thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Roshan. Our next speaker is Hamad Butch, welcome, Hamad.
Hi Mayor, all and the council members and the city officials. Thanks a lot for really, through COVID, letting teams play, letting kids play. Truly appreciate it, I think, you know, definitely Cupertino City did a fantastic job with that. So can't thank you enough. I think a few points that I'd like to bring up. Again, Sunday, we need more Sundays for permits. I mean, more permitted Sundays. And then, rest of the Sundays, we'd like to have for pickup games, because these kids really, we can't hold them, it's like, you know, they just can't stay at home, and it's impossible to do that. And it's not something that they can, you can say that you can rent multi, I mean, you can ask for permit for multiple fields, but cricket cannot be played on every field right now, because it needs a center wickets and all those things. So we don't have that on other fields, that's useless for us. So I suggest that, you know, you continue with the current arrangement that we have and not disrupt that. You know, I just would like to say, if it ain't broken, don't try to fix something. And then, I think I would also like to request that, you know, on the fees and all, because some of the programs that we started at the beginning of the year without knowing about the SARP increase in the budget. So that's going to put unnecessary pressure on us. So if we can work out with the group, when the cutoff date would be, I'm not saying your fees are exorbitant or out of line, but the thing is, I think the phase-in plan should be worked out with each group. And then in the meantime, you can work on some complexities that Love and Councilmember Kitty Moore brought up, because those are genuine issues also. So, and the concern that, you know, when you have hourly, that means the residents pay the same fees that non-residents pay. So that's, I think, a little bit of unfair to the residents. So I'd like to close with those comments. And as I've always said, we are extension of the city. And we will always make sure we protect the properties. And, you know, library field is for youth pitch, and we are trying to protect that, so we don't have to keep fixing.
Thank you, Hamad.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Your next speaker is Prabhu Kutiem, welcome.
Hey, hello, yeah, thanks for, yeah, listening. So yeah, my name is Prabhu, and I'm a Cupertino resident for the last six years. We live very close to the library field. I'm actually surprised by the survey results about residents not that favorable of using fields on Sundays. But looking at the sample size of like 500, it's probably understandable. Okay, I have two wonderful sport-playing children who have pretty much remained indoors for most of the year. As the city slowly loves more outdoor sports in the last few months, and seeing how much kids have been without outdoor sports. I'd like to ask the council regarding field usage, again, on Sundays, to make it like field usage for all Sundays and extend time from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or more than like six hours or seven hours, because not all games are like soccer or basketball, which get over in like an hour or two. Another thing is like, again, pickup games or practices, pickup practices that are being allowed on Sundays on city fields, should definitely prioritize youth sports. Yeah, those were my points about the field usage on Sundays, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Prabhu. Our next and last speaker is Amy Jasper, welcome, Amy.
Sorry. I represent Cupertino Littany, and I want to thank everyone for their hard work on this proposal. I was glad that at least the fee was reduced to $10 an hour, but it's still a lot for our league. We would estimate going from under $4K to over $10K in fees. So I think that might need to be reconsidered. Also, I have some questions. When the fields are closed by the city or by weather, who determines the refund amount? And if we do not use the field, because let's say a game is canceled or scheduled somewhere else, do we get a refund? And is it better to underestimate our hours and then ask for more later? And is there a proposed field use application form that we can review? And if this proposal is passed, when would the fee increase occur? Would it be this year or next year? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Would staff like to speak to the questions asked by the last resident?
Sure, I can speak to those. When fields, fees are collected midway through the season and at the end of season, that's what we would plan on doing. And any missed time for rain or closures would be assessed before their final payment. Groups would not be charged for any scheduled field use during a weather or maintenance-related field closure. Requests for refunds can be made up to 10 working days prior to scheduled use. Requests would be made to the recreation coordinator responsible for field scheduling. Regarding estimated hours, that would be up to each organization. I wouldn't underestimate my hours, because there is a chance, if you underestimated your hours and you hoped to come back later to get more, that the field would not be available for you if another group had reserved it. Let's see, here's the last one. The proposed field use application, there is no form to review at this time. We are waiting to see what happens with the field use policy and what is recommended. If it passes without change, it would go into effect in the new fiscal year after July 1st, so that would then be the fall season. I think I answered all the questions, but let me know.
Yes, that is actually the entirety, thank you very much. We have only about five minutes left, and I do want to provide a little bit of time for council comments with contacts since last meeting. At this point, can I have a motion to continue this item to May 4th? And I'll just verify this with the city attorney. Having already conducted the hearing and opening it up to the public, we can just get back to deliberation, correct? If we continue this item?
Yeah, you could close the public hearing and the public comments, and then continue the hearing on the item. uh, the public comments and then continue the hearing on the item to the next regular city council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. And so, um, that's what I would like, uh, to request for a motion, that we continue this item, um, after closing the public comment to, uh, May fourth. Would there be a motion forthcoming on that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll stick in it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Moore, and the second from Councilmember Wei. Um, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Commission carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so, uh, like I said, we now have a little bit under five minutes left. And so if there are final council contacts, let me check in with, uh, with Deb, our city manager. Did you want to report anything out briefly, uh, from staff's perspective before I bring this to council?
Uh, no, thank you for the opportunity. I don't have anything to report at this time.
Okay, great. Um, and city council, um, uh, let's, uh, keep to a minute. I won't say anything, so we have time. Uh, Councilmember Willie?
So, uh, I met with, uh, Chappy Jones in San Jose about Stevens Creek Corridor. He was disappointed that we didn't approve the eighty-five thousand for the Stevens Creek Corridor study. I, I still think it was good that we didn't approve it at that time. We, we would really need to define what, uh, would work for our community before we do an open-ended, um, joint study. So what I would suggest at this point, though, is that we have a study session here on, uh, Stevens Creek Corridor. And what would be the options that we would consider for Stevens Creek in this area, which then could be rolled into a larger study? And so I'm making a motion to have a study session on traffic transportation on Stevens Creek Corridor.
Okay, John, I'll go ahead and add that to the items, uh, to be discussed, to be determined. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, anyone next? Councilmember Wei?
Yes, can I make a request? I'd like to thank the Legislative Review Committee to review the legislations and then, you know, send letters from Mayor Paul. But I would like to have a copy or at least when that's being sent, have a, like, be notified. So that, because I was asked by someone and said, I mean, you know, your city's against this. I said, what? So just, is there, is there way, any way that we can be, uh, notified or, you know, put in an agenda or, or, you know, just, just I can have a copy of it or John can have a copy of it? Or the, I know it's so, I just would like to know when the letter's out that, that I know.
Madam, Madam City Manager, if, um, if I'm not mistaken, um, those letters should be available through our, uh, city manager's office. And so, um, to the extent that we approve the letters, uh, from the council, of course, those are publicly available as part of the agenda. But to the extent that they do go out, then, yeah, I agree that it is a good idea to, um, send it probably from your office, Madam City Manager, to the council hours.
And or we can post it on the Legislative Review page with the item. That might be the cleanest.
Good idea. Okay, um, Vice Mayor Chow?
Uh, it should already be posted. So just go to, just search Cupertino Legislative Review Committee on the website, you'll see all the letters.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Yeah, already on the website. All right, Vice Mayor Chow, did you have any, uh, comments within this minute or so?
No.
Okay, and Councilmember Moore, did you have anything?
Well, I'm not sure that I have time to do this because it's almost midnight, but I, I am still interested in having a single-use plastic ordinance, uh, moving forward. Uh, I'm seeing a pretty big disparity between how the packaging for food products are, is done in Cupertino. Uh, some are using a lot of plastics or you're getting silverware that you don't necessarily need. Um, and so I want us to look, look into that, uh, moving forward. And I, it might work in with your mayor's cup that you're looking into adding to the work plan.
Sure, thank, thank you for that, Councilmember Moore. And I'll note that we do actually have single-use plastic ordinance as a work plan item on our, uh, proposal list at the moment. And so, uh, I, I was dovetailing those two items into the mayor's cup initiative, so, um, thank you very much for that. Well, um, Vice Mayor Chow, your, your hand is actually still up. Did you want to say something very briefly or was that just an artifact of the prior comment?
It's just prior comment.
Okay, great. Well, we're at midnight, and I thank everyone for your, uh, your, your very excellent work this evening. Um, and so, uh, we'll go ahead and adjourn, uh, tonight's meeting, and we'll reconvene at our regularly scheduled meeting of May fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Thanks very much. Good night. Meeting adjourned.